And welcome everyone to the town of Wakefield Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, October twenty fifth. Going to start with a roll call of members. Uh Jim McBane.
Here.
Dave Hatfield.
Here.
Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Joe Pride. I see Joe, uh Greg McIntosh.
Here.
Kasumi Humphries.
Yeah.
And a note that Mickey Feeley will be unable to join us tonight. With that, I'm going to ask Joe Pride, the clerk, to read, uh, the legal notice.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Now we can. I could not hear you the first time.
All right. Sounds good. All right. Thanks, Tom. Uh, it consists with the governor's order extending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Every effort we've made to allow the public to view and or listen to this meeting in real time, if you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number one, three, zero, one, seven, one, five, eight, five, nine, two, meeting ID, eight, six, five, eight, six, two, four, seven, nine, five, five, passcode, one, seven, six, eight, seven, seven. Please use only, please only use dial in our computer and not both as audio feedback will to start the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disability Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon requests. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternative format or you require, or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renault, town engineer at seven, eight, one, two, four, six, six, three, zero, eight. As far in advance of the event as possible, every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make a reasonable arrangements to remove an accessory, Billy, the barrier for you, one, twenty-four dash eleven, three, six, one, Salem Street, Wakefield LLC, application for a special permit and site plan approval pursuant to Article seven, section one ninety dash thirty-six C, and Article seven, section one ninety dash forty-five of the Wakefield zoning by law to allow reductions in the requirements and or standards for off-street parking and loading related to two, to a two-family dwelling to be constructed on the premises. The property is shown as map thirty-seven, Lot Posse, A fourteen of the assessors map and is located at three, six, one, Salem Street. Two, twenty-four dash twelve, Jerry M. Giuliano and Maureen E. Giuliano, application for a variance under Article ten, section one ninety dash sixty-six of, for the requirements of Article six and table two of the Wakefield zoning by law to construct a shed on the premises. The property is shown as my map zero four, Lot Posse, zero K, three of the assessors map and is located at one, four, nine, Prospect Street. Three, twenty-four dash thirteen, twenty-four dash fourteen, J. Maj, LLC, application for a variance under Article ten, section one ninety dash sixty-six for the requirements of Article six and table two of the Wakefield zoning by law to re- to raise an existing detached garage and reconstruct a new three detached garage, application for determination and or finding with respects to a continuation and extension of non-conforming uses under Article nine, section one ninety dash fifty B of the Wakefield zoning by law to raise an existing detached garage and reconstruct a new three-car detached garage. A property is shown as my map sixteen, Lot Posse's zero, five, seven of the assessors map and is located at twenty Lawrence Road, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate that. Um, not sure why my screen wouldn't do the share screen, but um sorry, we couldn't put that up on the screen. Nonetheless, we're going to move forward here. Going to ask a little bit of patience from uh fellow board members. We have a couple of special guests tonight, so we're going to go a little bit out of order. In a call case. Twenty-three dash seventy, twenty-three dash seventy-one, twenty-three dash seventy-two, A and E Realty Trust, located at four sixty, four sixty-six and four seventy-two Main Street. Uh, if you recall, board members that William Renault from DPW, we wanted to discuss traffic there. He has joined us tonight, so we're going to take that matter first, so um he can move on with this evening after we have the discussion relative uh to this case tonight.
Appreciate it on that. I'd like to be first and first off, that's outstanding. So um, so folks, I guess I wasn't at the last meeting, so if you wanna, I I can provide you kind of an update on what the Envision project's going to look like and why the TAC recommended what it did, if that is what you're looking for.
Yes. You know, Brian, did you want to open it all? You want to go right to Bill?
Oh, I think it's fine. I think uh that was, that was exactly uh what uh what was discussed. I think Greg brought up the point that it'd be a good idea for uh Bill on behalf of Traffic Advisory to be here because we have a restriction on a left-hand turn into our project coming to Linfield, and I think the board wanted to understand that and hear from uh Bill, who's the vice chair of uh TAC on, on the theory and thoughts behind that. So.
If I, yeah, so if I can share my screen, I can um.
Yeah, you should be able to.
Okay, don't. Uh, nope, I got disabled.
Okay, yeah, see, I was having problems too. Let me pull this up. Hold on.
Try again, Bill.
Yeah, it says allow participants to share screen is checked.
I'm in, I'm in now.
I just checked it. I just checked. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dave. That's why you're the co-host.
Your wingman.
Looking at the project area, so Water Street, you can see my cursor, right? I believe.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so Water Street intersection is here. Uh, subject parcels in this area. We have Armory Street across the street. So these red lines that you see here are the existing curb line for Main Street. So in both sections, and what you'll notice is that we're actually necking down the overall width of the um, of the roadway in these areas. Um, we do have a double yellow line through um, through this stretch um as well, just to kind of provide some separation. So the concern that we had was if folks are looking to take this left-hand turn, we typically have queuing that backs up past this driveway. So folks waiting to make that turn would be backing up the intersection as well. And that was the, the main reason why the TAC made that recommendation. Um, we're not concerned about folks taking the left out because they would be in their driveway and looking for the proper gap to jump out. So you know, we can modify this to some degree, but we wouldn't be able to modify it to allow somebody to get around because we do it. We're moving the bus stop. That's in front of um, a farmland uh to in front of the um, the CBS as well. That's what's being proposed currently. We also have a parking space in front of that and then a bump out um, a little bit further on. So we really have one lane of travel through here that really wouldn't allow folks to get around, in our opinion. So that was the reason behind the, the left turn restriction in. Like I said, left turn out, you know, going south, we don't have a concern with that because they'll only be, you know, blocking their own driveway. So we're, we're great with that.
So you're going to allow people to cross that double yellow line coming out, you're saying?
I'd put a gap in there when, when we design. I mean, this is again, concept. We, we still have, you know, we have a good chunk of time for design. I mean, this is on the twenty-six tip, so twenty-two, twenty-six tip, which goes, you know, in, into um, we have to do that by the, the I believe the end of the fiscal year is when it has to be actually bid. So construction realistically, I'm not expecting to happen until twenty-twenty-seven, so there's plenty of design stuff that's going to be happening here. So our recommendation, just because of the configuration and the anticipation of the, of folks backing up into this intersection, was to restrict that left-hand turn. Um, we would go to the town council to adopt it as a official traffic um ordinance and the police would have the ability to enforce.
Hey, Dave, I saw your hand up first.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Bill. Um, I mean, I in concept, I understand where, what the TAC is coming from. Um, you know, again, don't expect a large volume here. There's going to be an odd car, but you know, again, if, if there's a queue there, um, one car turning left, you know, could, could cause uh something to back up. But so what's the envision of people getting into the? You know, if they're downtown doing their thing, now they gotta go home, or it's, you know, somewhere farther away from downtown, right, uh where they're not walking. Um, so the idea is they're coming down North Ave to Broadway, or they're going around, you know what I'm saying? They gotta go around and come north.
Yeah, they could.
But we're sending them around the other block to get to where they want to go, right?
Exactly. Yep, that's the intent. And you know, and, and sometimes we do turning restrictions. I mean, we did one for Broad, uh, for the Broadway project. But we didn't want folks to go into the first driveway. I mean, granted, that's in the same frontage, but um, you know, we've looked at these in other places. I mean, I've, I've implemented them in other locations too. So we hear every now and again about restricting a turn. The TAC deals with that. In my career, I've done it a bunch as well. I don't believe the applicant has a concern with it, so.
Okay. Dave, you done?
Yeah.
Uh, Greg, I saw your hand next.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that was my same question. I just don't, I, I understand the thought process behind doing it, but I don't understand the logical outcome. You know, I think it caught, I don't know, it just seems that in that area, it, it causes you know, some consternation. I don't know, some drivers. I, I think people will just go down to the next driveway and it'll cause backup both ways. Um, just logically, you know, they'll go down to the next driveway, cross that yellow line again, which even seems like a wider yellow line. Is it just going to be no left turn going all the way down that street until that um center divide there?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have, as you get further down, we actually have um center medians as well. So I mean, we talked about this. Keep in mind, this was also part of um our discussion with the bank as well, right?
Because we. Yeah, but that, that's a divide. So obviously, that's a little bit, you know, hard. I, I completely understand that. It just seems to me that the logical outcome is you're going to go down to the next driveway and three-point turn, and then it's going to cause even more problems.
I'm not expecting people to three-point turn on Main Street. I don't think that would happen. I mean, they would find a different route to the, to, if they know where they're going. I mean, it's their their, if it's their, you know, their residence, they're going to take a different route to get there, but they can't.
Walgreens, McDonald's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess optimists and pessimists. I guess you're the optimist. I'm the, I'm just thinking people are just going to take the quickest rate, quickest route. Um, I, I, I mean, I, I understand why the applicant doesn't have a problem with it, but it's you know, it's not on him to necessarily look at off property traffic, so.
I mean, keep in mind, we do have a peer reviewer that's part of the TAC, so it's not just myself. I mean, I'm a co-chair with, you know, with the PD as well. So our traffic safety officer is involved with this as well as our peer reviewers. So this is what our recommendation was. Um, you know, I, I can see this backing into the intersection pretty consistently.
Yeah, no, I understand that. Yeah, wholeheartedly. I guess my only other question would be, maybe this would be for Brian, less than Bill. It, or maybe for Bill. Is this going to be this sort of no left turn is a, I think you said is going to be a town ordinance, right? So it wouldn't be necessarily a, a condition of the decision, right? So if this does create other problems, then it's not like you have to come back for a modification of the decision. The town could just get rid of it.
I think if they propose it as part of their project and we're good with it, then we don't have to condition it. And then we will just deal with it at TAC to get it adopted, and if it doesn't work, we can always modify.
Yeah, I think the condition, Greg, is that the TAC bill wants us to provide the signage, which what we would do.
Yep.
And the, the also, the TC, TAC and their memo is going to allow us to, to take a left-hand turn, to put a gap in coming out of our project?
Yes.
But also for one dust, and if that becomes a problem, they might fill in that yellow line and say no left-hand turnout. I mean, at the end of the day, the, the applicant doesn't really have any control because this is all within the public decides.
Yep. Yeah, we should put it in the decision. I think that, that's fine, and we just have it on the plan, and then, you know, we'll deal with it through TAC as we typically do.
Okay. Jim, you had your hand up?
Uh, yeah, so uh, Bill, um, down where Salem and Church basically meet at the traffic light there. Um, you can park, you can basically line up one car or so, and then there's a crosshatch area left open for Pearl Street. Why isn't the same thing down here where there could be that crosshatch area, which basically means as people are parked uh or waiting for the traffic light to, to change, that they leave a space for someone to come out? I mean, that's, that's the intent of the marking on the roadway, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's another, that's another option, but we didn't, we didn't recommend it. Because we still think, even if you do that, some folks do, I mean, I could tell you on North Ave, just as I go every day, that it typically will back up past Yale and that box is full of people. So I'm, I'm looking at like, you know, we could, we could look at these things. The recommendation is what it is, and you know, if, if you folks don't agree with it, you can have them removed from the plan, I guess. I, I don't know.
Well, I, I know that there is quite, normally at certain times, there is quite a backup basically well past this building.
I know.
Particularly at, you know, when high school lets out, uh, junior high lets out, parents trying to get, you know, kids home or whatever, basically. So I was just thinking, you know, if this is a mitigation way of that's done at Pearl Street, why not here? But you know, if that's what you think is best, that's, you know, that's why we pay the big bucks, right?
Well, not the, I would, I don't, but the big bucks, the yeah, the, no, I would say, you know, it's, it's a good point. Um, you know, I, I guess we could entertain that or look at it as an option, if you'd prefer, but I think they're kind of in the home stretch here. So I, you know, I'm open to ideas on how you want to handle it. Um, you know, that is an option, but you know, I, I still think that you're going to get folks that are blocking it. And what it ends up doing is really impacting our signal, and that's what I'm not a fan of.
Yeah, I guess we don't, oh, well, we, I guess traffic knows how much in and out traffic is going to actually happen from this site. It's not a heck of a lot of cars, but there are still cars.
And you're going to expect them to be taking that turn during rush hour when that's backing up the most, right? So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yep.
Yes, one of the other questions we had, Mr. Chair, was what sort of signaling or lights should be on this driveway coming out up at the old YMCA? You know, we have a, a light that flashes that says car coming out or traffic about to come out uh to cross the sidewalk. Bill, what are your recommendations for that?
If you folks want to look at something like that, I mean, you can. I, they just don't have, you know, typically when you're doing that, you ha- you own both sides, right? So you would have it blinking on both sides, so folks that are walking know that it's there. But again, like we're saying, it's, there's not a ton of traffic. People are going to be coming through and looking, you know, at, at the pedestrians. Uh, the goal would be not to have them block the sidewalk because they're not supposed to. I mean, realistically, we know that they already have access now. And you know, um, they're going to have to pull forward because of the site distance stuff, so I know it's going to be difficult to stop that from happening, I believe. I don't, I don't know. There's, I don't think there's a good solution and that, that I could come up with to, to fix that. May, I mean, the you know, the letting the pedestrians know that someone's pulling out, yeah, I guess you could have that, but realistically, I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, you're you can't do it for both ways that folks would be walking, right? One, so that does, doesn't necessarily make sense. And then you know, they really can't stay in their driveway. They have to inch up to be able to see, so if they can pull out, just.
Yeah, it's more for the pedestrians than it is for the cars. So that the pedestrians have some sort of understanding that there, there's something coming.
Yeah, I mean. I mean, we could talk to them about looking at something on their building if that's what we want to do.
I think, I think that, I think we had that done at uh, behind uh uh, the hardware store coming out of that alley.
Yeah.
We did. That's predates me.
Yeah, we did there in the YMCA. I mean, we've done it a couple times.
I like the Y and the one on Main Street near the dunks. It's a, it's a parking garage. You're coming out of a garage. It's their own building, as Bill said, so you can signal on both sides and warn folks, but.
I guess you could do like a, like a sign that protrudes a little bit, but it's high enough. You could, you could potentially do that. I mean, I don't know if, if, if that's what you folks are thinking about. I mean, that, I, I've seen it done. It's all over the place in Boston, clearly, and we've got a few in town, so if we think that makes sense to one of the pedestrians, that's not, I don't, I don't have any concerns on that.
There is a nice one-sided or two-sided sign, like Jim was saying, on the one behind uh, the hardware store there at the um so you could do it on one side, and it, it actually is pretty nice. I don't really have a view either way. You know, obviously, I think it would be safer, but it is uh, unless you're saying you need to on both sides because it's some sort of like, I don't know, laser you have to put on it. So I have no idea how it works.
No, I think it just, it's nothing really. That's not really even a new TCD thing. It's more just a kind of a warning sign that's been done in places, so.
What trigger is it, Bill, coming out of the driveway versus a garage? Because usually.
Apps, I mean, um, common sense, would I guess I would say, maybe.
No, what sets it off? I mean, because usually the ones I've seen them on are connected to a garage door. So when the garage door goes up, it lets people on the sidewalk know something's coming, but our garage door is way down the driveway, so.
You could do a tube that would do it. Um, there's a.
A loop detector in too.
Like a little loop thing.
Loop detector? Okay.
Yeah, if, if Scott, you know, Scott might want to chime in on that, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, sure. I was fumbling for the, for the controls to get off of mute, but uh, yeah, I mean, it could be, it could be a loop detector, like Rick mentioned. It could be a radar or a video detector, and they, they have these devices that are not real, uh, not real obtrusive. They get your, they get your attention, but they can be mounted up high, so um you know, so it's, it's not in the way of any pedestrians. It could go on the building, you know, we could, that's something I think we could look at. Scott, can you identify yourself so folks know your qual?
Yeah, sorry about that. Scott Thornton with Vanessa Associates. We uh, looked at the traffic study for the project.
Thank you.
And I, and, and just to follow up, you know, I, I, I think I, I do share Bill's concern with the, with the uh, the possibility of the left-turning traffic backing up some of that southbound traffic on um when on Main Street. I, I think that, you know, it's, it's not like it's a lot of vehicles that would be likely to make that maneuver, but it could happen. And you know, whether they're whether they're um, you know, if they, if that traffic has to, has to get redirected and, and come in making a right turn into the site, you know, it's we're not looking at a lot of, because it's a small development. We're not looking at a lot of traffic coming into the site.
Okay, board members, any other questions for, for Bill and team at TAC?
Well, there's one other issue that, that I, I didn't want to neglect, Mr. Chair.
No, I, I do have another issue, but is it related to the traffic?
Yeah, well, parking.
Okay.
Yeah, um, so it was, our park, our parking is um, that we're proposing for the residential is, is deficient by two uh, under the requirements. And, and the TAC asked us to try to find two spaces, which we can't. I mean, we've, you know, the, there's real restrictions with this site, as you know. Um, and then the TAC and their memo kind of acquiesced to the fact that um this is a twelve, it's a total of sixteen units. The twelve of these units are one-bedroom. And, and four of them are two-bedroom. So it's a similar breakdown to what was with the Santander Bank Building that you just permitted. That project was too deficient. And you know, so the board asked, you know, asked for some detail on that, and the, in the TAC said it would be great if you could meet it, but they understood if we couldn't, and then pointed to the fact of the, of the bedroom uh count, which is um, majority of well over the majority of uh, one-bedroom.
And I believe we, didn't we ask for, you know, something in the decision noting that no permit parking would be allowed on the street? I believe that was another condition we added, right, Brian?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, Bill, we've talked about condition, understanding that uh, trying to explore if we could somehow meet it, and if not, we're going to be looking for some sort of condition to prevent on-street parking from the residential portion of the building, obviously.
Okay, yeah, we can. I'm sure Brian and I can work something out on that.
Of course, with one fewer unit, you basically meet it, but.
I'm sorry?
With, with one less unit, you basically meet the requirement.
Yes, well, that's another approach, but that's why they pay you guys the big bucks, right?
Think we have a pretty good condition you can copy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, board members? On traffic?
So Brian, would you be, your client be amenable to a condition of, or how do we handle it, like potentially having some signage like we do on Water Street?
Oh, yeah, that would be a condition. That was referenced in the TAC memo and that we would provide uh, the signage. Uh, I think, I, I personally think that the alarm warning is a good idea here. I, I think it's a safety issue, and I think um you know, I think it's, it, it's warranted. It, it doesn't hurt. There's nothing wrong with safety. So I, I think uh, Scott, you tend to agree with that? You're on mute.
I know. Yes, I do agree.
Yeah, so we're, we're going to look into that. Scott, can you look into that and what the options are with that?
Yep, yeah, I can probably send you some, some spec sheet tomorrow.
Okay, I just didn't know at this point whether you wanted to update the plan or condition it, just again, to try to, knowing we're near the end on this.
Yeah, we'll probably uh, update the plan. You know, the board likes that. So Rick, you would make the notes on the plan where we're going to, where we're going to provide the uh the no-left-hand turn. We're going to provide that on Main Street. Okay, and then we'll, we'll update, we'll get the specs on the um on the alarm warning, et cetera.
Yeah, I can work with Scott on that. We can get something spec on that.
I'd like to put that right on the plan too, the spec of that on the plan, Rick, and where it's going to go.
Well, detailed.
It could have an impact on Mr. McBane's architectural uh of the building. After all that work, Jim, you can end up with a.
Peters.
Peter's work, or Steve's.
Yeah.
Okay. Everyone comfortable now with traffic?
All set.
In the direction we're heading.
All set, Mr. Chair. Thanks, thanks for attending, guys.
And thanks, Bill. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Rick, for attending. Uh, Brian, I did, I know we had a couple other little items on the list, so.
Yeah, so Rick, Rick, you know, I don't even know, you know, I want to be expeditious here. I, I, you know, Rick Salvo is here from Engineering Alliance, and Bill's still on. So Rick has uh, submitted his drainage strategy to Bill, which is under review, so that still has to be finalized um, for drainage purposes and in the, and, and Bill is also, his department, engineering department is reviewing the site plan, so they might have some comments on that. The site plan has not significantly changed. It's pretty, pretty, pretty consistent with our driveway leading down to our garage. There's not a lot of sight here. So I think, uh, I don't think there's really a need for Rick, uh, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, to present that plan. I just let you know that it's in the works with the engineering department, and you'll be getting a memo on that once it's complete.
Yep, that's fine.
And then uh, the, the other thing we had is um, Steve DeFuria is here from um, Phoenix, and we wanted to just go over some um updates on the architecture. There were just some quick follow-ups on that. Um, uh, one dealt with the pigeon bracket that uh, Jim McBane brought up that wanted us to look at different options for that. Um, the other one is a, a board member, Kasumi Humphries, had asked us to look at the window height in the back as it relates to the garage, to get some detail on that. And I think Steve's had an opportunity to get to Kasumi her answers on that. Uh, and then there was a garage door that you wanted to kind of show. So with that said, Steve, could you kind of take it from here and just highlight those issues if you would?
Yeah, yeah, appreciate it, Brian. For the book, for the record, Steve DeFuria, representing Phoenix Architects, um I'll just jump through the changes. So I, I know there was a discussion on the height of the windows in the back area where it relates to the parking garage that is adjacent to our site. So we, we ended up going out there and just looking at a couple measurements. Um, so we identified where the top of the parking parapet wall is adjacent to our site, um, taking a measurement down to where the parking level slab is, which was about forty-two inches below the wall. Um, and then we were able to grab some heights just off of bottom of window, so um, the units kind of uh, on the, the second floor before you get down to the townhouse levels um, from the parking slab up to the bottom of that window is about ten foot three. Um, so you, you're pretty high up there in terms of privacy. The townhouse units where you're in that main living area down to the parking slab, you're about six and a half feet. Um, so anybody looking in those windows is probably either jumping up or standing on their tippy toes or jumping on top of the uh, the parapet wall. Um, a lot of what we noticed with the adjacent building is a lot of people use blinds there as well for privacy. Um, so just with the heights of the windows and off the slab and stuff, I think we'll be we'll be okay with privacy. Um, and then I know there was a discussion just on materials last time about the um, the bracket in the upper corners. So we, we actually looked at a couple precedents, um, similar typology to our building, and a lot actually got rid of the open web. A lot of them were more solid brackets. Um, so we started to find a bracket with a similar profile from the one we had previously. Um, so now there's the issue of the, the crows and the pigeons getting up there, which Jim had alluded to. Um, and then I know there was a discussion on a garage door spec. Um, so we actually linked up with a local uh, garage door manufacturer and were able to find one that's a, a similar color to the siding um, to reference in town. It's actually the same garage door that's on the apartment building next to Dunkin' Donuts on Main Street. Um, so just if, if you guys are in the area driving by, you can see the, the spec in reality. Um, other than that, the, the architecture of the unit count and everything else is, remains the same. Um, happy to answer any questions on those couple topics.
Just go to the elevation of the front of the building, Steve, just to. Great, thank you.
Okay, board members, any questions? As it relates to the. As it relates to the relationship between the windows and the parking deck and the other items? Hearing none. That's the uh conclusion of your presentation, Brian?
Yeah, so I think I think just to kind of uh check the boxes, is that kind of. Um, conclude things with architecture, is the board in agreement on that?
I'm set, Jim, how are you feeling?
Um, you know, the only thing I I got question on in this we did on North Avenue. Was the signage, whether we're gonna have a standard signage. Uh, are they gonna set a standard, is this coming back later, you know, is each business gonna have their own sign? Or is it gonna be sort of a signage standard like a standard like we did in North Ave? That went across that building, so it all tied it together. I don't know if anybody's thought about it, but and maybe it's something that we wanna put on hold until it gets to the point where there's people. You know, showing up.
Yeah, I I think, Brian, I can actually chime in, I think the idea would be. Probably put it on hold until we know exactly what's going in there in terms of retail, I think we know location-wise. Just having it on that banding in terms of dimensions and stuff that that's to be determined, um, but also I think the. The main signage on the building as well, where we're showing four sixty, I'd say it's probably up for discussion as well. Um, so location, I think we have an idea, the the specs of that signage exactly, I think is to be to be discussed at a later date.
I think from the point of view of the sign review board and even the potential for a change in. The regulations, what we were looking for was that any. Uh landlord who controlled the whole building basically set a stand standard. Telling the tenant what they can and can't do and get it approved. Um, basically, so when the tenant, when the tenant changes, it's clear basically how that fits in. So one might think about this and get a tenant standard that they can present before this board. And you know, it has to do with letter heights, the style of the letter and that sort of stuff, and whether it's on a backer. Or whether it's freestanding signage, whether it's lit or not lit, so there's a. Criteria that's set by the landlord or the owner of the building for a state, um, that can be utilized. Uh, with any tenant that comes along or any now or later, basically, so it always looks the same.
Okay, Jim, you kind of did that with um with the Dollar Tree building.
Yeah.
And that looks good, yeah, my my, I think we can reserve it, but I I think the point is well taken, I think. Um, if you can bring up the front elevation again, Steve, just quickly.
Well, we'd normally condition signage anyway.
The point is, I think there's gotta be some uniformity, um, I think otherwise you're gonna ruin the architecture of the building. I mean, there's so much work has gone into this building, so I, you know, I'll talk to my client about it, but I think if you just let, you know, businesses put up random type signs, I I think it. It's kind of just, you know, I I tend to agree with Jim, it's it's not, it's not gonna work.
Totally agree, good point there, absolutely.
So I, you know, that's a point well taken, that we'll give a little thought to that, I think, you know, we don't wanna hold off the project on that, so we could defer it. But it's something, if the board retains jurisdiction, then we can give a lot of real thought to it and come back with a plan.
Yeah, I think we could withhold jurisdiction, but also with the thought that it will be a thought out plan.
Right.
Let's go to what Jim explained, cuz I would want, I would not wanna see random signs on this building.
Yeah, we could put some intent into that condition about the signage too, so we're pretty clear about what we're looking for.
Right.
Okay, that's, thank you, anything else, board members? Brian, you've concluded your presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna open it up to public comment. If anyone here is a member of the public that would like to comment on this, please use your raise hand function and zoom. Seeing none, I'll close it to public comment. So Brian, we have a couple of tasks to do there, I think you have your list. Think you'll be ready in um for the November meeting?
Three weeks, yes.
Mr. Chair, are we at the point of starting to talk about draft conditions and O and M's, that kind of thing?
I think we are, I think that's a good point, Dave, so Brian, if you could think about that as well, if you can pull that together for November thirteenth?
Fifteenth?
Is it the fifteenth?
I think so, yeah. Yeah, fifteenth.
Anybody else? If not, a motion is in order to continue?
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue this hearing to the November fifteen, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I vote yes, meetings continue to the fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
By keeping the theme of uh going out of order here, we also have some folks here. Uh, that wanted to uh, along with our fellow board member, Mr. McIntosh, give a presentation on the MBTA. Uh, community overlay, um, so who is, I, who's here for that?
Um, I'll just kick it off, hi everyone, it's Erin Kukendall from the Town Wakefield, I apologize, I'm on my phone for this, I'm having issues with my camera. Um, I wanna thank you all for having us back here tonight, um, and Greg for helping us coordinate it, um, joined by Jim Hogan. Um, I guess the the chair, if you will, of the MBTA Working Group Committee, um, I've been kind of the internal lead for this project. Um, moving forward, um, but I just, you know, wanna, we're all here just to give you an update of. Where we're at, after a lot of hard work since the beginning of the summer, uh, we had our first public meeting last night, which I think went really well. Um, we'll be having two more in uh one in November and one in December, um, so please help us spread the word, we'd love some feedback and um. From the community members, but with that being said, I'm gonna hand it over to Jim, who's really gonna be handling the presentation and I'm here more for any technical questions there may be. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, for giving us the opportunity to talk about this, uh, if you don't mind, I'll share my screen and so. We're here, I'll try to go with some pace, but as you guys can probably imagine, there's a lot of nuance in here, so. We're more than happy to take any questions the board may have after this presentation.
Jim, just so you know, I did forward this to everyone last week, so they presumably had an opportunity to see it too, so. That might help us, help us move with some pace, as you said.
Absolutely, so uh as as Aaron mentioned, the working group was convened with Greg from your board as well as members of. Planning Board, Town Council, Environmental Sustainability Committee. And we were tasked by the by the planning board and the town council to review and react to this multifamily district, so we've come up with a proposed multifamily district. To address a requirement from the state as part of the section three A of Master General Law forty A. The proposed multifamily district that we've come up with is centered on Wakefield Communal Station and the downtown business area in town. The district would end up allowing developments as of right with no uh. Discretionary permits required for developments up to three stories and a maximum of four units per lot, and it would exclude some of the commercial parcels within that district. I don't need to go through with this board about how the special permit process works, typically, you guys are probably more familiar to that than I am even, um. For some context, if we elect not to comply with this law, the state's already defined some definitive penalties related to. Three housing programs when the initiative was first announced in twenty twenty, which we received three point five million dollars over the last three years. And actually some more apparently just recently approved, additionally, more recently. The state announced fourteen additional programs that Wakefield would be ineligible for if we elected to not comply with this law. And the Attorney General more nebulously threatened legal action that is not a hundred percent defined. We've heard whispers that they may just say that if you don't pass a multifamily zoning district in the town, then the entirety of your zoning. Becomes multifamily as of right in some capacity, so it's not really a hundred percent clear what that looks like, but there's definitely some major negatives if we elect not to comply. As it relates to what we're actually being, we're asked to do by the state, it's to create a multifamily district, minimum of a hundred and fourteen acres. And have the zoning capacity to allow as of right approximately seventeen hundred units. And a zoning district that would be a minimum of fifteen units per acre, which is an important caveat in terms of how we came up with some of the decision-making we did on where we're proposing it. And it needs to be located near our existing commuter rail stations, and it can't have age restrictions, and it must be suitable for families with children. And again, this is a three plus unit. A three plus unit per lot as of right is what they're defining as multifamily. Board members, the board probably are aware of this, but Wakefield currently has no zoning district where multifamily homes are allowed as of right. We have approximately two-thirds of the ha- of the land in town is single-family dwellings only, and we have a couple places where you're allowed two families, you know, in the. General residence, downtown business, et cetera. So what is the 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 working group come up with, and you can see on the screen in the blue, that's the zoning district that we are proposing. We took a little hard, long look at this and we felt as if that there was uh both the Wakefield Junction Station as well as the. Bus routes around on Main, so we tried to center the district on those two transit corridors as well as our downtown business. You know, we are aware that this is a requirement from the state, but the working group felt that. This is where they'd be best cited based on some of the particular areas of the law, as well as frankly trying to increase the amount of housing in and around our downtown business. And centering it on the business in the downtown, so we could potentially drive foot traffic and help support our local businesses in a better manner by increasing foot traffic. As you guys probably are well aware, in this general area, I've created a a map that shows the where the business, industrial, general residence. The blue outline is where we're proposing on this district to occur, there's a lot of overlap with business and general residence. General residents are allowed to family as a right today regardless of if this passes or not. Moving over to some of the particularities, so want the. District that we've elected where you can have the four units as of right, if all those units, all the existing housing stock went to zero. And you're figuring out what was allowed as of right, you get up to two thousand three hundred and fifty-five units. Today, we have already have sixteen ninety, uh, sorry, we have sixteen ninety-six as the minimum. Today, later on the slot, the presentation I'll show that we actually have approximately sixteen hundred already. The sixteen units per acre that's being provided by the proposed district does meet that fifteen units per acre threshold. If you went down to three units as of right, you'd be down around twelve units an acre, uh, which would not, it'd be a non-compliance. And that density is really why why we got away from Greenwood, Greenwood, if you took the existing lots in Greenwood, they're lot significantly larger than the existing lots around Wakefield. Wakefield Junction, Wakefield Center, so if you made it so you could use the great lots in Greenwood, you have to get up somewhere around six units allowable as of right. In order to meet that minimum density, which we thought would would not be appropriate based on the existing neighborhood character of Greenwood. And we thought that four units as a right in our dens- denser downtown would be more appropriate. Additionally, to highlight, the maximum stories for the zoning would still be three stories, which matches our existing zoning for the mixed-use garden apartment style. As well as the uh thirty-five foot building height. Context, the existing units, the existing buildings that are in these districts, you see on Pleasant Street, we've got a four unit. On Richard's Ave, a four unit, and that's kind of what they look like. And Wakefield Ave and Avon, we've got a three and a four unit, you know, these are buildings that are existing, and I think some of them have been existing for some time. So it, the what we're talking about isn't a massive structure that's completely out of the neighborhood character from what we can, what we we believe. For context, you know, I would anticipate, I know that this is a project that the board is intimately familiar with, but we would anticipate. Projects like this would be allowable uh as of right, instead of having to require some of the the special permits that may be required at currently. Um, so this is what we would anticipate, you know, this, then this is a thought process that this would be a way to increase density in these downtown areas. Without materially changing the neighborhood character of these downtown areas. And for development context, the uh required housing capacity, like I mentioned. Is this a set approximately seventeen hundred units doing to have, and this area has already has sixteen forty-one built today. So the proposed district with that two thousand three hundred and fifty-five, you know, you would have as of right. An additional seven hundred and fourteen units above what's currently built, so approximately six percent of the total housing stock there. And you know, the proposed district does represent approximately three percent of Wakefield's total landmass. So the reason why we're talking about this even is statewide, the reason why this law was passed was the state perceives that there's a major housing crunch. In the state of Massachusetts, you know, the literature, depending on who you, where you look, they they believe that there's a two hundred thousand unit housing shortage. In Massachusetts, and so this law was passed with, not with Wakefield in mind, but with the entire state in mind, they really feel as if. If we don't start finding ways to make zoning allow for more housing to be delivered, that we as a Commonwealth are going to continue to struggle to. Maintain our ability to house with population growth and keep housing, you know, something that people can actually achieve in the Commonwealth. If you look at Wakefield specifically, with the, we thought that we took this law that, you know, there's a lot of reasons to quibble with the way that the state is imposing this law. On communities, but we thought we were gonna take uh take lemons and make lemonade out of it, and so what we did is we we came up with what we thought was a very thoughtful proposal. Which frankly, probably isn't a bad idea on on the merits regardless. We have this downtown area where we probably could have some additional tr- foot traffic to help our businesses grow. And be able to sustain in a in a more meaningful manner, so we thought that going from two units as of right to up to four. Wasn't a huge difference and would make it so you could have all called the gentle density rise around this area. Provide more potential patrons for our downtown business, and really we thought, you know, increasing more housing around. The commuter rail and that bus corridor, if you're looking at where in town does it make sense for us if we're trying to guide growth in town? It probably makes sense in this area and in Greenwood, which we would have done, except for we hit random some of the difficulties with the densities. We, in addition, we do think that, you know, by increasing the amount of housing that's being delivered in this area. It could increase the housing options for existing Wakefield residents, and again, we're really concerned in trying to support our downtown businesses by. Increasing the amount of foot traffic in that area, by increasing the number of people who live there. So from a the implementation schedule perspective, you know, this has been in the works since, you know, A- April twenty twenty-two, when it first came up. We had a series of question answers for the planning board in late twenty-two, early twenty-three, and then uh Greg volunteered to hop on the working group. And we've been working through summer of twenty-three, we've got this map proposed, we're in the process going through writing the bylaws and a series of public forums. The first one being last night for the pu- planning board, where the public was invited to provide feedback. We're anticipating that we're gonna be going through the rest of that public process in in through the early of twenty twenty-four. Taking any of those, in any of that feedback and revising it, and we do anticipate going town meeting for the April twat- town meeting with a proposal. And that we have a backup town meeting in case we then we run into any issues, and then we must pass this district by twenty twenty-four. In order to remain compliant with the law, that's the threshold that the state has set for those penalties I referenced earlier in the presentation are triggered. So in summary, town leadership, you know, town council, town administrator, mayor has has. Pretty, pretty definitively said they intend to comply with the 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 law based on the financial penalties the town would incur. And that a multifamily district of some kind will be presented at the town meeting before the deadline occurs. In order to allow the town populace the ability to vote or vote to or not pass this district. So the proposed multifamily district is in full compliance with the state zoning law, so it does maintain our ability, our eligibility to get grants from the state. And it does provide, if we pass it, a competitive advantage against up for grants. Besides the ones that are on the list, that are completely ineligible, when the state's measuring who they wanna reward grants to. Compliant communities are being favored over non-compliant communities. It's also provides us an opportunity to help our, help the local and our regional housing needs by increasing the ability for housing to be delivered. It provides increased housing options for residents within Wakefield, and it again, really centering the growth. In its thoughtful way around our downtown business district in a manner that it's not going to materially change the neighborhood character, and it's gonna support our downtown business by increasing foot traffic. So if anyone is interested, we have a website where you can learn as much as you want regarding this, and there's a. Uh, more information as it relates to how we got to where we got. And with that, I'm more than happy to take any questions or answers that the planning or the zoning board of appeals may have. I apologize if I went too fast, but I I know you guys have a lot of other things to go through tonight as well.
Now, Jim, thank you very much, thanks to uh Aaron uh and Greg as well for all your work on this, clearly. You guys put a lot of work on this, if you could stop sharing so I can see the uh board members and and then I might ask you. Pop back on the screen a a shot or two, depending on. Pop back on the screen a a shot or two depending on the question, but I see a couple of hands.
Tom, can I just go over three quick things real quick that are that coming up? So I wanna, I know that went pretty quick, but I wanna make sure this this three pretty important aspects of this. That I just want to point out real quick and one is there is. Or at least when this law was passed, there was no mechanism to require mixed use. They did come out later and and say that towns can. Require mixed use in these properties, um, but it's just, it it just essentially, we looked into it really. Like a lot of this law is sort of inoperable for our town. So what we tried to do specifically is stay away from our um. Our business in our downtown areas, we didn't think it would be appropriate to allow. Single family only, no mixed use by right, meaning that they could knock down a business, build a by right house. So we we stayed off the North Ave area, the Alvin Street area, the um. Uh, Main Street area, and that's kind of why you see. What looks like separate parcels in some areas. Um, also, we did look at Greenwood, as Jim was saying, um, it's sort of. Um, esoteric in the law was written, but the the you have to take the lot sizes as they are. And in green, as they are today, not saying you could, you know, you you can't look at them and say that, oh, well, you could subdivide that lot, so. You know, you can really get this, but so lots sizes in Greenwood. Are actually a lot larger than they are in this area, meaning we would have had to allow something like. You know, six to eight units by right, as of by right. And then we also, in that same vein, we did look at the Foundry Street, a lot of people, I think at town council and. Last night have said, you know, well, why didn't we look at, why are we not using Foundry Street? If we were gonna put Foundry Street into this, we would need to uh allow something like, I forget the number of units, but basically height of like. Four, five, six stories by right. And that's, you know, something we thought was completely inappropriate to do, we wanted to keep as much control as possible. And then the last thing I want to point out is the area that, and I think this is important, that we are proposing. Um, as you probably saw, is somewhat larger or a- at least in numbers than the minimum compliance map we would need. Um, you know, I think a lot of the pushback is, hey, we should only do what's required by the state. I think I think we heard that town council, we heard that last night, I think that's sort of short sighted, or I don't know if that's the right word, but. Sort of leading us into a, you know, cut your nose off to spite your face type of scenario. You know, sort of saying, hey, the the state is pushing this down our throat, why don't we only do what's what's required? We thought that um stopping a certain zoning, and and Jim, if you could bring the the proposed map up. Stopping a certain, so the uh at least looking at this, the northeast. And the southeast, those two parcels are, I guess what you could be called, I don't know, added or extra. Um, they are centered around our downtown area, right? And we thought that stopping a certain zoning area right at Main Street, simply to comply with. With the minimum state requirement was an illogical solution. Um, we think that a- and as Jim showed in his um. Map of current uh, you know, housing in those areas, there already is some housing in these. Squares, these districts that comply or or i- is what we expect to be built there, so it's not completely out of character. So we thought, instead of just, you know, saying, hey, we're only gonna comply with the state and just putting a hard. Um, stop at Main Street, it made more sense to continue that across the street, drive um. You know, gentle density, I know some people disagree with that term because everyone wants to stay, you know, where it is right now, but at least what. What we view as gentle density up to four units uh in that area. And 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 just stopping elsewhere was sort of illogical. I think that's, yeah, that's all I wanted to add.
Okay, thank you, uh, helpful. Um, seek some hands up, uh, Kasumi, I think your hand was up first, you have have some questions or comments?
Dude, um, so I live in the Greenwood area and I I appreciate that sort of not having. Um, zoning for the green area and I do agree, but. Would there be a possibility of the state coming back, say, why we are not developing? Like looking at the Greenwood station area and only in the main downtown area?
So the map that we proposed meets all the state requirements, so unless they come back and change. The law again in a material ma- fashion, we that is not a risk at this time.
Um, would there be, are you going to do like a backup plan of the Greenwood area if the state decide to come back?
We we are not planning on doing anything with Greenwood area, so we did look at it, this is a slide that's in the appendix you may see. And so we looked at this, a a zone that's denoted in the green. And we found that if you looked at that, the unless you, you know, the. Four units as of right, you only get, you know, approximately eleven, a little less than twelve units per acre. Which doesn't meet the requirements, the state wants you to be up above fifteen. I think you need to give out six units per lot as of right in order to meet that fifteen unit minimum. So what we did is we intentionally made this district compliant with the state law. On the basis of the proposed multifamily district, such that we will not have to do anything with Greenwood.
Okay, yeah, because, yeah, because I was gonna say, I was looking at the slide page and. Where you highlighted is green is, um, I don't know if you draw by like this area, but all the streets are like. Um, like hills up and down and most of the houses are like. At least like four feet, five feet up from the street level, so if, for example, if we. Allow like the units that thirty five feet, that's gonna be like at least up to like forty, forty five feet. Like up from the street level, so I was gonna just ask questions like. It'll be like, so you have a house. Like your house next door be like thirty feet higher than your house, like that's. What that's what's gonna happen in Greenwood area. So I just wanted to make sure like what you're sort of like excluding the Greenwood, which is I I do agree with it.
Yeah, so Greenwood is not something that we're proposing, this was something that we considered an alternate, but ended up not working because of the particularities of the law.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kasumi. Joe, saw your hand up?
Yeah, thanks, uh, Tom, um, so Jim, you mentioned that town vote, is this like a two thirds town vote?
No, so it so typically, as you guys probably know, two zoning changes are two thirds, however, uh. I can't remember, it was a couple of years back, but they changed it, so it's a simple majority for zoning that increases uh multifamily housing.
All right, so do you, have you looked at town feedback? The reason I'm thinking about this, I'm trying to play devil's advocate. I hear a lot of people saying there's too much housing going on, so I don't even know if this would pass, you you think it would pass, you think. Is it like borderline, you think it's a, an easy yes, what you have thoughts, have you heard anything from the town? Only because I hear a lot of people saying this is gonna, Wakefield becoming the next Everett, becoming the next Bedford, and it's just. I don't know, I just wondered if you heard.
So I I think that, so we're in the early, early days of trying to figure out what exactly we think the town thinks of this. Uh, I think that one of the things we've heard very clearly from pretty much anyone who's talked about this is that. There's a strong interest in at the very minimum complying with state law because everyone recognizes that. Not passing it despite the state and then losing access to all those state grants is not prudent. So the the question, it seems to be that people want to talk about is whether or not. We go with the bare minimum or if we go with what is proposed, which is slightly larger than the bare minimum. In order to um comply. So I think honestly, it's early, I would say early days in terms of getting that feedback. But I think that's something that we're trying to be cognizant of as we go through this process.
And Joe, there will be multiple, like Jim said, there was a public hearing last night, there's one in November, there's one in December. He's been at the town council meeting, um, town council came to our meeting, so there's been. Multi, it has been and will be a lot of opportunity for.
This has the feeling in the room. Like when you hear, I mean, when, but the, does it sound like people are okay with this, or is it, is it, I mean, like you said, it's too early, but.
I I think, I think the feedback is people are, people are upset with the state. I think we get a lot of people uh saying how they disagree with the state and the state's approach. And then I think that then a lot of people. It's kind of hard to tell in terms of the merits of that proposal itself versus how much they just piss at the state and they want to do the bare minimum to kind of.
Yeah, I don't like, I don't like the fact that they're threatening us with, do this, always, we're just gonna take money from you, I mean, that sounds like a threat. In a way, uh, my other only other comment is. When you do this, it gives the board no access to a special permit, which means we can't do a condition. And a lot of times our conditions are, you know, maintenance plans, irrigation. And that takes our hand off of it, where people just build these things and again, they fall apart and it makes the town look like crap.
I mean, I guess you gotta remember, Joe, what normally not. Doing in a very extensive O and M for a four unit building, I think that's that's more of the larger projects. And also, that's the state law, I mean.
Yeah, not, I just, this is a thought that came to my, I wrote down and. But yeah, that was my two comments, so thanks, good times, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Joe, Chip. Yarmu, Chip.
A lot of the calculations were based on an acre. Can you tell me what the square footage you're using Oz is for an acre? That's minutia I know, but I'm just curious.
It's an input model, it's a, it's a.
A real acre or are you using a realtor's acre?
Well, it's an input from or model from the state, right, Jim, it's so.
Really, yeah, Aaron, I'll defer to you on this one.
Yeah, so um, there's a lot of layers to how we're calculating some of these figures, Chip. It rolled out this um, this new regulation, they rolled out this compliance model, it's called, so. It's in partnership with the GIS um system where they pull the property information. So when we're doing these maps and we're doing, um, trying to figure out the. The calculations, they pull all the GIS information and I actually just import it into an Excel spreadsheet. And they have all the backend calculations and that's how we're able to figure out. Um, kind of the dwelling units per acre, um, as well as the number of units. And so it's based on um whatever is being pulled from the state's GIS system.
But you guys aren't figuring it at all.
No.
You're just taking it from the state.
This is all information that's from states, um, you know, parcel information. That you can find online uh anywhere if you go on the GIS system.
Okay, it's probably a full acre, a real acre, okay. Sorry.
And on that, um, how the, you know, some of the Excel's um layouts that you saw there were pulled, you know. Right from um our summary charts of these uh compliance model data sets that we've put together.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Done a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, any other board members with questions or comments? Hearing none, Jim, if you could stop. Well, thanks again for coming, uh, I know your uh your reward for doing all this is time off in purgatory, so. And as a board that doesn't receive any criticism, uh, we don't know what it's like to to go to these public meetings. Pushback, so, but thank you so much for coming. Um, I know I'll try to attend uh one of the future forums, I couldn't do it last night because of a work event, but. We'll try to be there as well, I know other board members have expressed interest too, so.
Yep, and and thank you for your input and, uh, you know, obviously, we'll uh, we'll keep you guys abreast of uh of any other future developments.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
All right, getting back to uh the regular agenda. Well, next up is continued hearing twenty three forty three, twenty three forty four, twenty three forty five. Twenty three forty six, twenty three forty seven, twenty three forty eight, twenty three forty nine, twenty three fifty. Granite Family Trust LLC located at three fourteen, three thirty, three thirty six Salem Street.
I'm back, Mr. Chair, thank you for attorney Brian McGreal representing Granite's uh Family Trust LLC. Uh, at three fourteen to three thirty six Salem Street. Last we met, um, you recall that we are working on lowering the height of the building, sinking it down as much as possible. Um, changing the topography out front to reduce the height of the wall and and to reveal more foundation. So um with me tonight is Bill Mandel and Jim Cook uh from uh Granite's Family Trust. Uh, John Ogren is also here, our architect, Andy Zalinski was not able to make it, he had a conflict, but. I don't think we're gonna uh take a ton of time tonight, I just wanted to to quickly show. Uh, the the first um result of the um change in the. Lowering of the building uh as it relates to the impact on the foundation. And then I want to kind of let the board know where we see that we're gonna go from here. Up a little bit. So this, this you can see is what Andy has done, he's basically lowered the height of the building by eighteen inches. And uh he's also revealing more of the foundation to lower the wall out front. Uh, John Ogren is is still working on his plans to adapt to this. Uh, to make it work, which uh he's gonna get us about another foot approximately, as you know. What Andy has done with this rendition is he's used, in essence, the same material at the that that would be kind of like the wall, the stone wall out front. Uh, the board talked about maybe some, doing some different options. Uh, in mixing in and and he kind of did that, like you'll see here, he has brick going all the way down. Versus the stone, but we can work with Jim McBane on that and and look at materials. Once we uh fine tune this with John, we're gonna do another rendering to kind of give a look, look at it. And then uh you might recall also that we need to get Jim Emanuel involved. Because he has to revise his um landscaping plan. Um, to coincide with what's changing with the topography in the building and to cover up some of the porches. Trees out front, so it's really still in the works from what we um had presented last time. This is just again, the architectural kind of update. Um, where we anticipate being, uh, we met today. Uh, John Ogren feels that he'll be completed with his uh site plan updates by next week. And then we um were hoping to meet with Mr. Todd Bell, the board representative on that. Uh, with the town engineer again and Jim Emanuel, so we can talk through um what John has changed. And then we can also talk through the landscaping, so we get Mr. Todd Bell's ideas on behalf of the board before uh Jim Emanuel putting any pen to the paper. On revising the landscaping and that way there can be discussions with Chip on, hey, can you do street trees, yes, we can, or no, we can't because of this. So we kind of, we would kind of vet that, the fortunate thing is we have three weeks before the next meeting. So I think we've got some time uh to accomplish this and then we will also. Uh, be connecting with Mr. McBane, the board's representative liaison on the architecture with Andy. Uh, to kind of fine tune um how we're gonna deal with the foundation, uh, et cetera. So uh that's where we are, we just want to let you know that we are moving in that direction, work in progress, we hope to have some real. Significant progress and uh close to bringing this thing to an end by the meeting on November, whatever it is, thirteenth or fifteenth.
Fifteen, fifteenth, yep, okay. Is that it, Brian?
That's it, I don't want to waste a lot of the board's time, but um, you know, and you know, I just want to make sure that you agree that we're going in the right direction on this, I'm gonna keep chugging.
Okay, comments and questions from the board? You could stop sharing, Brian?
Mr. Chairman, it's what I envisioned that we talked about.
Yep. It matches my notes, uh, just wondering if anyone else had any questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, are there any members of the public here that would like to comment on this proposal, if so, please use the raise hand function in Zoom? Jim raised his hand, it's not a member of the public, but Jim, let me just make sure. I don't see anyone from the public, so I am gonna close at the public comment. And we'll now we'll come back to the board, Jim?
Yeah, I, when we meet, Brian, um, can we pull materials in like, like we normally do? Um, light fixtures, that sort of stuff, we might, if we're gonna start talking about an end product here. We should basically have the architect basically start pulling that stuff together as well.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that, yep.
Anything else, members of the board? Okay, I think a motion to continue to November fifteenth is in order then.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we continue this hearing to the November fifteen, twenty twenty three meeting.
Motion's been made second and any discussion? Hearing, seeing, done, regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip? Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, matters continue to November fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to new hearings. First one up is three sixty-two Salem Street LLC. Uh, located at three sixty-two Salem Street.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, again, Attorney Brian McGreal here on behalf of the applicant, three sixty-one Salem Street, Wakefield LLC. Um, with me tonight is Ryan Barry, who is one of the principals, and also John Ogren is our, our site civil. This, this um, this uh, is the um, uh, property um, which is not too far from uh, three thirty-six. Uh, it's on the opposite side, the one twenty-eight side of the street. Uh, and we're proposing to raise an existing single-family dwelling and to build a two-family dwelling. Um, the construction in the dwelling and, and all of the um, accessory uses will be in the business district as extended. Um, which is a by right use, uh, a two-family is a by right use uh, under our zoning by law. Uh, we do have a special permit application and with that uh, comes site plan approval. And the special permit application really just relates to parking relief. Um, because this is kind of an odd, you know, you don't see this very much, but our by law has a provision that says all proposals and it names districts, which are primarily the industrial district and the business district that do not require a special permit would require a site plan approval at the planning board since, since our project has, the way we designed it has a couple of parking things with setbacks on the building of seven and a half feet in the business district. Again, it's kind of odd. You don't see this very often, a two-family in the business district. We're asking for relief uh, under one ninety thirty-six C special permit, which triggers the spec, the site plan approval at your board in conjunction with a special permit. But you know, I just kind of want to stress, we're really not looking for a ton of relief. We, we really probably could design this to look for no and make no relief and make it a by right project, but it wouldn't make sense not to have garages on here. We would have parking spaces in front of them within seven and a half feet of the building. Um, so um, we also appeared before your board a few months ago. You might recall it was a pre-application meeting and we kind of had a rough sketch on what we were gonna do. And you provided some suggestions to John Ogren on redesign to shift the building over, turn it to maybe make, face it uh, more towards the street. So um, you also wanted an idea of uh, the architectural component that we were thinking about, just to have that for the record. So before I hand it over to John, probably a good idea that I kind of give you an idea of the building that you're looking at uh, when John's showing the plan. So this is the two-family dwelling. This is the front look from Salem that you'll see. This is side elevation and the, and this is in sync with John's uh, site plan. Uh, once he starts going through that. And then this is the other other view. Not that this matters a lot because it faces one twenty-eight, but um, this is the rear view and this is the other side view. So the board asked us to put some dimensions on the building, um, which I think we've done. Um, and with that said, I'm gonna hand it over to John, if I may, Mr. Chair, to kind of refresh the board's memory on this and, and John can point out to what the board's suggestions were when we came before you on the pre-application, what he's done to uh, adjust or account for that.
Yeah, please, John, go ahead.
Yes, hi. Good evening, John Ogren, haze engineering. Um, I'm like to share my screen. Um, so this is, this is the, the existing conditions. You got Salem Street at the bottom of the, the page. Uh, there's, this is the existing one family. There's a one car garage, the rear with a driveway on the right side. Um, the rest of the, the property is essentially um, landscaped or um, lawn. The, the other part just kind of stresses um, the zone line. Is it, it's kind of this purple color. It cuts across the back of the lot and down, you know, towards the center of this lot. Um, that's the zone line between the business and the single residence. Uh, this other line is the zoning allows um, to extend that zone line thirty feet. Um, if it basically bisects um, an existing lot. So that's what this other purple line is. That's thirty feet from uh, the actual zone line itself. Uh, looking at proposing um, two, two units, uh, two family, uh, reworking the driveway, giving the ability to come in and back out and turn around before we get out to Salem Street. Um, I want to point out, there's a couple of things that um, the board had, had mentioned in, at a previous meeting. Uh, one was originally we, I had had this building kind of parallel to this lot line. So it was kind of facing in this direction here. Uh, the board had suggested that we rotate the building and get it so it's essentially parallel with Salem Street. So that's this layout here. So we rotated it. Um, the other um, request that the, the board had was for us to go out and locate all the trees on the property, now which we've done. And um, you know, we essentially, we, we did our best to try to preserve, you know, the majority of the trees are kind of in this back area here. Um, this line here is essentially the, the limit of work. Uh, so we're, we're intending to um, preserve majority of those trees in the back. Um, now there's a couple along the side, you know, on the property line here that just do the proximity to the the proposed building um, may need to be removed. Um, we're connecting to existing sewer and water out in Salem Street. Um, we're proposing uh, some roof infiltration. Uh, there's some units proposed in the rear of the property and another set of units proposed out towards the front. Um, based on that, we're actually showing a slight decrease in the um, rate of runoff and the volume runoff that um, essentially flows off of the site. Topography wise, this, this site, potentially as you're looking at the, the um, house, uh, the, the topography is essentially from the right and it sheds towards the left. Um, I think that's pretty much pretty much all I have.
No, can you go to the zoning table quickly?
Yep.
Slide that open, maybe blow it up a little bit for me. So thank you. So as John mentioned, this is kind of a split lot. Um, but under um, um, we, we're going by the business uh, uh, dimension requirements because we have our frontage in the business district. And one ninety-nine in our by law allows us to extend that business district line by, as John mentioned. So we're needing, we need all the requirements in the business district, uh, as you can see. Um, and um, one of the things that's really interesting on this is as far as a use goes, as you know, we're proposing a two-family, which is allowed by right in the business district. There's currently a one-family, uh, single-family dwelling on, on this lot. It's not allowed by, it's not allowed in the business district. So that single-family use is, is non-conforming, which is interesting. Years ago, single families were allowed in the business district, but at some point our by law was amended that they're not allowed in the business district anymore. That was kind of surprising to me. Uh, but in any event, so from a use perspective, this actually brings the property into more compliance with zoning than what's there now. Uh, there are some outstanding issues with um, with DPW that need to be worked out before the board could be in a position to close this. I expect we should be able to do that in the next couple of weeks. If the board were even inclined to close it, but I just wanted you to know that. That um, I spoke with them today. We got a memo today from them. There's some drainage questions that they want answered and addressed. Um, there's also some utility connections that we have to work out with them. Uh, and, and uh, some I and I stuff that needs to be worked out with them. So um, there are some still open-ended issues uh, that uh, um, need to be uh, dealt with.
Yeah, Brian Galen and I didn't get that till about six o'clock tonight, so.
Yeah. Yep. And I talked to the town engineer today and, and I acknowledged, he said, you know, you're not gonna try to close it. So I said, we can't because uh, we've got to answer your question. So, and he agreed. We want to get it right.
Okay, is that the presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, if you could stop sharing then, so I could see the board. Okay, comments or questions from the board? Jim?
So Brian, um, looking at John's uh, presentation and um, the architectural elevations. Uh, it appears as though off the deck at each doorway is a set of stairs. John doesn't show any walkways to those stairs. And so that's one question is coordination. Another one is it appears as though the roof that forms the deck, covers the deck also extends itself over the garage entry as well? Is that what I'm seeing here?
Uh, let me, let me bring up the architecture real quick. You. Hold on, Jim. This angle might, might help.
So that, so that, but we'll go to the front for a minute.
Here's the steps. There's your front.
Yeah, so it appears as though in between the first and second floor that that roof runs across. So it overhangs the garage or is the garage out further than the second floor?
John, can you answer this? Or Ryan, maybe, my client who, who's provided the plans?
Yeah, I mean, we, we definitely not um, showing that roof going across. You might be corrected that. Um, we do have, the steps are a little different. We had the steps coming off the side and we had a, a walkway going out to the driveway. Um, so there is a little inconsistency there.
Well, it looks, it, I mean, architecturally, it looks like there's an overhanging roof at the entry. And then that roof continues right to the, over the garage as well. That's the way it reads to me.
Right here, Jim?
Yeah, and it goes all the way across. So it overhangs, it overhangs the garage to give at least some weather enclosure at the garage door.
But it comes out, it doesn't come out, doesn't come out farther in the front building.
Is, is there a plan with this thing?
As far as the uh, architectural?
Yep.
We'll, we'll get it. Yeah, I mean, I, I hear your question. I don't think we're prepared to answer it tonight, but we'll, we'll answer it.
All right. So then going back to the elevation, the front elevation. It's really, the, the, the entry to this building is not defined enough so that it makes, I mean, it looks like a box. Great arc box, but it's almost like that roof ought to return the corner or something to, to take those two entries and define them better than they are right now. But maybe that's because I can't see the three-dimensional nature of the whole thing. And that has something to do with the roofs as well. Cause it just, there are sheer walls on either side.
The right side steps back a little bit, kind of defining.
I, I, I understand that, that the, that the left is forward of the, by two feet or something like that of the right side. But it's, it's more on the first floor, how this thing presents itself a little bit. So I'd, I'd like to see a little more character in that area that may, like I say, require that deck, entry deck to turn the corner a bit.
I feel, I feel like we might be a little on the line. Um, I have to compare that to John's drawing. John, do you know if that's on the line right there? Can we go around the corner a little bit with that deck? I don't know if that's possible.
Around the side, around the side.
Yeah, I think are we at capacity with the uh, with the setbacks, do you know?
Um.
I don't have that drawing on my computer right now. I feel like we.
It might be a little tight on the right side. Um.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could return the roof around maybe, I guess, if it's something.
I think you could probably wrap that around both sides.
We'll work on that.
Anything else, Jim?
No, that's it.
If, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, we got homework to do on this anyways. If we can just, if we, we, if we can share that, those possible changes with Mr. McBane, just to make sure he gets satisfied.
Yeah, that sounds right. Anybody else?
Not Mr. Chair. Seems pretty straightforward to me.
Seeing none, we did get uh, correspondence from both the fire department and, who had no issues with it and the uh, conservation commission. This does not fall within their jurisdiction. Brian, when you do work that um, DPW memo, could you distribute it to the board on the Friday prior to when you're coming back so the board can see the DPW letter? And see what, and how their comments were addressed?
Mm-hmm. Yes. If they have it.
Okay.
As you know, sometimes they come late, so.
Yeah, I know.
They usually come late. It would be great if they could be reminded that we really appreciate something sooner so we can digest it.
Exactly. So, cause you have so much homework, I'm not, I'm not gonna get into it or read it tonight then, cause uh, you can have some work to do there anyway.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a lot of cleanup to do on that, so.
Okay. Hearing now are the comments and questions from the board. I'm gonna open this up to the public for a comment or a question. If you have a comment or question, please use the uh, raise hand function in Zoom. Seeing none, I will close it to public comment. Brian, do you think three weeks is enough to address some of the things that uh, the homework you have to do?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we continue this hearing to the November fifteen, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Seconded.
Motion's been made in second. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Matters continue to November fifteenth. Okay, next up is Jerry M. Giuliano and Maureen Giuliano, one forty-nine Prospect Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attorney Brian McGreal here on behalf of Jerry and Maureen Giuliano and their property at one forty-nine Prospect Street. Um, this is in my neighborhood, uh, right on Prospect Street. As you uh, come up the hill, when you hit the flat path plateau, before you get to Hopkins Street on the right-hand side, uh, the Giulianos uh, acquired this property, was in pretty, pretty significant, well, it was, it was, it was needed a lot of work, let's put it that way. I, I wouldn't say it was in a significant state of district here, but it needed work and up, updating. And they did, they did a lot more than that. They, they've uh, significantly invested into the neighborhood uh, in the town and did some incredible improvements to this uh, property. Uh, it's beautiful when you drive by it every day. A lot of my neighbors com- complimented and commented on it on a regular basis. As we uh, we leave our neighborhood and we, we go right by it. And I think probably the best way to start is to uh, share some photos, I may, before I even get to the site plan. This is just a, this is just a photo of the front of the, of the property. And this was, this was really a, a pretty significant rehab. They, they took the whole roof off. Um, when the project first started, you know, I drive by, it's a lot of people would say, my God, what are they doing? Because it kind of sat dormant for a while while they were working on it. And then they just went to town and just did some incredible improvements to this property. I was out there today walking around. It's absolutely gorgeous. Um, and you know, it looks like a new home. You won't believe that it's, it's a rehab, but that's what they did. Beautiful foundation, fieldstone. Um, so that's the, that's the front of the property. And this next photo is a little bit relevant on what we're, what we're asking for relief. So this is, this is the side of the property facing down and what, this is a pretty. this is the side of the property facing down and what, this is a pretty, pretty um, simple application that they're looking for a variance to put a shed in, in the back. And I'll get into the detail of why, uh, but I just took a, a, a side shot because the shed will go in this area right abutting the neighbor's shed, which is uh, near their property. And this is a beautiful pool they put into the back and this is a neighbor's shed. And as I get into the, into the uh, site plan, this is the area where they desire, desire to put their shed. Uh, which will back up uh, in essence and block the neighbor's shed. And just one more photo and then I'll get to the site plan. This gives you an idea. So they, they proposed shed will go, would go right in this area. So with that said, let me get into the uh, site plan and the shed itself. And then we can talk a little bit about um, the relief that they're looking for and why um. And I think you're familiar with that, the prop, the photos probably helped you orient you a little bit. Um, so this is where I took the photo, uh, kind of going back on the side. Cause there's a fence right here that shows on the site plan as you see. And I took the other snapshots here facing in the, in the existing neighbor's shed is, is pretty much right about, right about here approximately. Um, so they desire to place this shed uh, in this area. As the board is aware, they're allowed to have a shed in their rear yard. Um, the requirements are seven and a half foot setback from the rear lot line and seven and a half foot setback from the side lot line. So uh, they're meeting that setback requirement from the real lot line. They're actually exceeding it, so they're in compliance with the eight feet. They can't, they're not meeting it here. Um, it would, they'd like to keep a little distance here uh, from their pool. And that's why they're requiring, requesting to put it up on the um, on, on the property line that would, in it would, in essence, serve two things. Would, it would kind of uh, surface some privacy for the backyard of these folks and it will block the existing shed that they have here. As I get into this, uh, the Morandos who own one forty-five Prospect Street, as you'll see towards my end of my presentation, they actually support this application. And think it will be a benefit to their property as well. Um, so, and then I want to show you the uh, the style of the shed that they're proposing. We have two things in this regard. We have kind of a, a drawing, just kind of giving you some dimensions. So this is the, this side is the side with the older hang that would face their pool. And this would face the back, but it's a slanted roof. And probably the better way for you to see this is an actual photograph uh, from the company of what it would, exactly what it would look like. So that's a, that's a photograph if you can see that. Gonna go back to the site plan for a minute. Well, actually, let me bring up the uh, Miranda's uh, Miranda's uh, letter. Real quickly, I submitted that. I think you got a copy of that. With the application. If not, I'll, I'll send Gail another copy. Uh, just direct it to the chair regarding one forty-nine Prospect. We own the property known as one forty-five Prospect Street, which directly abuts the property known as one forty-nine. Prospect Street, this before you are bored for approval of the shed that will be situated two feet from our property line. We are running a supportive of the application relief sought and we would like, we, we respectfully request that you vote to approve the same. The shed will be a benefit and that it will provide an additional source of privacy for the applicant and us as well. Thank you for the advanced view consideration, Michael Miranda. I will follow that, Mr. Chair, for your records. I think I submitted it. If I didn't, I'll send another copy of it.
Please do, it, it, it's just not in the file. I'm not saying.
I probably didn't. I know I might have got it after I submitted the application, so I will, I'll send that to Gail tonight for the file. I think um, as far as the standards for the variance, I think this meets the requirements, you know, unique circumstances. What requires us to have this? Uh, is the lot width. Uh, the lot width is, is, it gets narrower as you go in the back down to eighty-five feet. Um, if it met the hundred-foot requirement of the district, the single residence district, they would easily be able to meet that. Um, that's why they can meet it in the rear. They have eight feet. They have, so they have plenty of uh, of depth with the lot, but because of the, the unique shape on the, on the width, uh, it creates a problem with that setback. The only one that um, would be impacted by the variance aspect of this shed, the two-foot non-compliance is the neighbor who supports it. Um, as far as um, um hardship, you know, people have sheds that are allowed to have them in their backyard. Uh, they can't because of this unique circumstance. And then as far as the detriment goes, again, um, there is no detriment to the people that um, are, are affected by this non-compliant two-foot setback, the Morandos, because they actually support the project and think it will be a benefit to their property as well. So with that said, we're happy to um, answer any questions that the board might have.
Just, how about the neighbor at ten Sheffield, Brian? Any contact with them?
No. Uh, is that, are the people in the back? Is that what you're talking about?
That's the White House. It's the first one facing on Sheffield on the left-hand side.
No, I mean, I didn't see, I didn't see a need for that because it meets the setback requirement in that area. There was setback requirement for, are you talking, are you talking this ten Morrison?
Yeah, that most, I thought it was Sheffield first. Is that Morrison Road West there? But you know the White House I'm talking about.
Yeah, ten Morrison, right in the back here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we meet the setback requirement there. We meet the, we, we're more than uh, meeting the requirement, seven and a half feet and we're at eight.
Okay, and what, you know, if you could, what's the height and the, and the length compared to the uh, the shed on the other side?
Where, you, you're allowed under the bylaw to have a twelve-hundred square foot shed or barn in your backyard. This, this is, this is, this is uh, twelve by twenty. Um, so basically this thing's two hundred and forty square feet, so not even close. Um, as far as the dimensions of the blue shed on the neighbor's property? Is that what you're referring to, Mr. Chair?
I am.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I haven't measured that.
Yeah, it seems like less substantive, but um, if they've signed off on it, I guess it's not uh, I shouldn't be asking, but Kasumi, I see your hand up.
Um, this may be a silly question, but is the neighbor okay? Like, if anything fell on top of the shed roof on the backside, like, if you have um, snowstorm and like all the snow is gonna, it looks like it's gonna go into the neighbor's yard. Like, are they, are they okay with anything like that?
Yeah, I mean, they wrote a letter of support, so I don't know what else they could say and.
No, Brian, that's, it's actually a dip. Anything sliding off the back of this has seven and a half feet before the fence. Nothing's gonna hit, hit, go onto the neighbor's yard. The peak, the peak is at the two feet is the peak side, not the slant, not the pitch side.
I see.
No.
What?
Yeah, what, what?
I think you love that backwards, Chip.
Yeah.
I'd show the site plan again.
Either way, it's got two feet before it hits.
I think Kasumi's referring to this side, Chip.
Yeah, that side, cause the, the shed roof is yeah, sloping down towards the neighbor's yard. So anything that falls on that side, I'm just thinking about coming snowstorm, like four feet snowstorm and that's gonna just go dump into the neighbor's yard.
Yeah, I mean, they, they didn't, they didn't raise any issue on that. And I can only go by what they said in the letter that they supported. I would assume that, you know, they, they saw what we're doing.
Brian, along that line, so obviously they saw the plans. Did they see the actual picture of this essential pool house, the height and the cupola and the, all that stuff? Or did, did they just see the plans?
I can ask, um, Maureen, are you here? So Maureen Giuliano was here. And.
Yes. Um, we talked to the neighbor about the shed, uh, that as far as the exact height or anything, there was no concern at all. They didn't ask us any questions regarding that.
Anything else, board members? I guess my only other comment is, so the shed was an afterthought for the backyard and the pool? Cause it seems like you kind of built your way into a variance.
Hmm. I mean, I, I don't know if it was an afterthought, um.
You're right, I go by that site all the time. In the back, there was, there was a building back there. They demolished that. And so you kind of had a clean slate back there.
Yeah, I mean, they could build a, they could build a smaller shed and meet that setback. So. Um, you know, yeah, they could. I mean, that's why they're asking for a variance. I mean, they could, they could shrink the shred, shed, shed, but then it wouldn't block out the other shed and it, and it wouldn't benefit either neighbor.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board before I turn it over to the public? Only, and before I do that, I will make a note that I did get letters from both the conservation commission, the fire department and DPW, and none of them had any comment on the application. Is any member of the public here to um, make a comment or a question regarding this application? I see a Meredith Rose with their hand raised. If you could give your names and your address, please?
Uh, yes, I'm Zachary Rose and this is Meredith Rose. We're at ten Morrison Road West. We're the, the White House that you saw in all those pictures that you're referring to.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so first question we had was, what is the exact height of the shed? That wasn't clear from the plans and it looks quite large, more like a pool house as opposed to a shed. But I, I wasn't clear on how tall the building is.
You have that, Brian?
Yeah, I'm bringing it up. And I think Jim or one of the architects, when you see the drawing, he's probably gonna be able to answer it better than me. Um, but you're gonna be able to tell. So it doesn't give an exact height, but it gives the height to this point of eleven-two to this cross section. So. I mean, I think you could estimate where that's gonna be from the other there. Probably what, another four feet?
So fifteen feet or so.
Yeah.
So the fence, um, there's a vinyl fence and then our wood fence and they're both five feet high, so that will extend ten feet over top of that fence. Um, the window, I saw there was a window on the one side. Is there a comparable window on the side that faces our driveway? Because that is like, our driveway goes right along the fence line, so it would almost be like the window was looking directly into our driveway. And our driveway, I mean, we've got three small kids. We use it constantly for bike riding and scootering and things like that. Can you answer something about window placement or what type of the windows would look like on our side?
Yeah, let me bring that up for you, um, to, so you can, so everyone can, I, I, so I can show, I think, what you're referring to, to make sure that you're able to describe it. I, I think you're referring to like the, these windows with, the way this is kind of situated, these windows are facing away from you and you're asking would the same windows be on the other side?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, uh, Maureen, do you know the answer to that?
Yes, there would be the same windows on the other side.
How high up is that window?
I don't know the answer to that question. I think it would be below the fence line, five, below five feet. I don't know.
Well, the eleven-foot mark's about here, so it's probably right about, that's my guess.
Right, a normal, a normal door is about six, eight or so, you know? Seven feet, so top of that's seven feet.
Okay.
I'm gonna go back to, I'm gonna go back to the drawing to see if that, now that the drawing doesn't show the window, so. But actually, let me, the drawing might actually help everybody here, including these neighbors that, uh, including the roses, so. So this, Chip, you're right, so that's like seven feet to this point, right? So they're probably somewhere in here. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And what's the timeline for the, the construction of this? Cause we, we've had, uh, the, the, as I'm sure everyone's aware of the, it's been almost over two years at this point to, to get here. So we're just curious, how much longer?
To build another structure.
Maureen, could you help with that, please?
Do you want to answer?
Sure. Hi, this is Jerry, I'm Maureen's husband. Um, the plan is to begin construction, weather permitting. Um, as soon as, uh, hopefully we get approval. And it's not, it's not, I, I keep hearing it referred to as a pool house. It's actually not a pool house. I know what it looks like. Um, there, there's no running water. There's, it's simply uh, to store uh, pool furniture, a lawnmower and stuff like that. Um, but yeah, I, I would think it would be, start to finish, shouldn't be more than, I don't know, eight weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, just so, if I can, Mr. Chair, just so the roses understand, so the, the question to tap on to Jerry, so the process would be if it were approved, then there's a, a decision has to be written and then, and then appeal period, so. You know, if they get approved tonight, it's not like they could start construction next week. Um, it would probably be about forty-five days before that would be able to occur. I just wanted you to know that in the event they get approved, that you're not saying, why, why didn't they start tomorrow? They said they could.
So this is a twenty-twenty-four build out?
I'm sorry?
It's a twenty-twenty-four build out.
Probably, yeah, when you look at the weather and yeah, yeah, that's probably my guess.
Right, Brian, is, I'm sorry, what, uh, this, uh, cut in here, but is it a Reed's Ferry shed? It says Reed's Ferry, right?
Yes.
So, cause they usually, they usually build their things, like, they usually build them in like two days. I've seen.
They're pre, they're prefab.
Yeah, they come in and.
I mean, not prefab, the sides and all come.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, just that, just a quick comment as well.
If, if that, if that's the case, then why, why is the timeline six to eight weeks to build it?
It is.
Hi, this is Jerry. Um, the, the Reed Ferry shed is a basis of design. That's, that's what it is. Um. So it's not a Reed's Ferry shed. It'll be built onsite.
Uh, it's a bespoke, okay, so I gotcha.
Okay, so it's not going to be a Reed's Ferry shed as depicted in the plans presented to us?
No, that's the design of the, it, it's gonna look like that. It's gonna be built onsite. It's, that's the design of it.
Okay, cause when we see plans and potentially vote on something, we're also saying in accordance with the plans presented to us. So if somebody comes in later and say, why does this look different? You know, or why isn't it a Reed's Ferry? You know, cause that's what's in the plan. Um.
That's right.
Glad that was brought out because it's, we can be at least understanding that and note that for the record. So go ahead, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Well, I, I apologize. I didn't understand the process. Like I said, we, we, it, it was a question of, we know what we want there, um, don't know if you'll allow us to build it or not. And so before we got too far along, we just wanted to show what we had in mind. It will look
Like that.
Like that.
Yeah.
Have to be that. We can't look somewhat like that, right? Have to be that.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, I was just trying to back up, Mr. Hatfield, cause when we stamp the plans,
Mm-hmm.
That's what has to happen, uh, or the building inspector's not gonna approve your building permit. I understand. I guess, yeah.
But I think Ma- uh, Maureen and Jerry, uh, what they're saying is you, you, you have to have your contract to build it to that spec.
Yes, that's what we were planning to do.
Okay. Were those your questions, folks?
I think so, just like the height and the timeline.
Okay.
And then also, and also use, and they said that it was gonna be used for um, pool equipment and things like that as opposed to recreation or something like that.
Okay. Thank you for your comments and questions. Anybody else here to comment on it or ask questions about this application? Hearing and seeing none, I'm gonna close with the public comment. Back to the board, pleasure of the board.
For Mr. Chair, I'll move that we grant the variance pursuant to section one ninety-sixty-six of the bylaw, uh, to vary the requirements of one ninety thirty-one C five regarding uh, the distance from a lot line for an accessory structure. Um. Uh, for the applicants, based on the plans, the plot plan presented by LJR Engineering, uh, dated September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Um, a uh, architectural rendering of the proposed shed drafting concept LLC, um. A, uh, architectural rendering of the proposed shed drafting concept LLC, um. And, um. A depiction of what the intent of the shed is going to be, although it, it as stated will not be an actual Reed's Ferry shed, but of similar, um, style and size. Owing to circumstances related to the shape, um, of, of the land and structure. Um, the little enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner, and that desirable relief may be granted. Without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying or substant- substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter. I don't know, board members, if we really contemplated or had any conditions as part of this. I don't know that there are any. Welcome them under discussion, but that's my motion, Mr. Chair.
We have a second? Joe, I saw you move, so I'm going to say that's a second. Any discussion? Maybe the only suggestion, Dave, you think your language is strong enough to ensure that, um. The shed is built consistent with what is. Depicted?
Yeah, as I stated, you know, consistent with, um. Or it'll, it'll look, you know. Virtually like the one and, and we can get the wording right in the, in the.
Isn't it a decision? Brian, when we write the decision, we're going to really want to. Focus in on some charity language there.
That it looks and is built to the same style and size and. As the one depicted, yeah. So that was the intent.
With particular attention to the location of the windows as brought up by the neighbors.
Yep. Yep.
Second the amended motion. That's.
No, I don't think we really amended it. I think we just wanted to make clear for, uh. In case this is approved, um. When Brian and I work on the, uh, decision. We want to expand language there.
Yes, I don't want to add complexity, but if it is not a prefab, what do we want to condition that there is no windows on the backside? Doesn't seem like to be used anyways, uh, uh, just a thought.
We are fine with having no windows on that side if they don't. We'll take the windows off that side.
If that works with voting members, I'm not a voting member on this one, so.
Yeah, that's fine with us.
I mean, I, what, uh, if I can for you, Mr. Chair, whatever, whatever, um, the roses want, I mean, it's up to them. Maybe they want the windows for aesthetics to look at or. So we would defer, you can, through you, if you could ask them what they would rather have on that side, we'd be happy to do it either way.
Folks, do you have an opinion on that? You are muted.
I would support no windows. I think it would add privacy for each of us.
Okay. So can you amend your, uh, motion?
Yeah, so I would, um, entertain a friendly amendment to the motion to, uh. Uh, to say that the shed will be constructed, um. In a, in, in the same style and size. And shape as depicted on the drawing included with our package. Um, although it will not be a Reed's Ferry shed by name, and it will not contain windows as shown in the drawing, on the sides of the building. Well, I think, I think we have windows on our side.
Yeah, on the side facing ten Morrison Road West, yeah.
Okay. Only on that side?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, now I second the amended motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Okay, regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I vote yes, so that is adopted five to nothing.
I do.
Pretending, uh, I know, uh, I gave, uh. To Julianos, I hope they didn't think I was giving a hard time because we're, Brian, to your point, what they've done with that property is, uh. It's been really great and I do think it's a, a benefit to the neighborhood and an improvement in the neighborhood, so. I appreciate that. We're, we're not offended. Thank you so much for the, for the time and for the kind words. We appreciate it. We're. We are sorry that it's taken longer than we thought. There's a lot of things going on beyond our control, but. We are assure you and the neighbors, we're doing the best we can to finish up and, um, get on our way. So thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving right along, case.
Mr. Chairman, one, one second. I've had to plug my phone in, so that's why I have no video.
Okay.
All right, so. You wouldn't want to see what it's looking at.
Okay. I was going to say fill in your own guilt there, but, uh, next case up is twenty-four thirteen. Twenty-four thirteen and twenty-four fourteen, J. Marg LLC, twenty Lawrence Street.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Attorney Brian McGraw here for J. Marge LLC. Um, and the property is at, uh, twenty Lawrence Street. I, Dave Piscatelli is here. He is a principal of J. Marge, the owner of the property. Um, property at twenty Lawrence Street, um, is, um. Right off of the lake. It's, it's a property that. Uh, beautiful property, um, that went into a significant state of this property went into a significant state of disrepair. Um, and it's a beautiful Victorian and Dave is in the process of meticulously restoring it. Uh, it's a legal non-conforming three-family dwelling as determined by the building inspector. Uh, and, and Dave is well under construction on his rehab. And just like the last one, I think. It would be probably best to start this by sharing a, a couple of photos. And the initial photos that I'm going to show you really have nothing to do with the application, but I just kind of want to see the, it's interesting, the investment that he's putting into this property. So beautiful Victorian on Lawrence Street. He's, he's rehabbing it. Um, he's taking all the siding off. He's virtually gutted it. It was, it had been, it had been chopped up and not, you know, not taken care of on the inside. Um, so this is a shot of the front. There's a lot of foundation work and steelwork that had to be done on this. You can see that this is the back. So he's had it gutted, um, and he's put in foundation in parts of it. He's going to put it back down. And what this application really deals with, the simple, simple part of this application. Um, deals with the garage. The garage in the back. Let's get that opened. Is a two-car garage. You can see it. And the purpose of this application is to raise that garage and reconstruct. A three-car garage. Uh, which will serve the three dwellings. Uh, it's kind of a, you know, this thing's not in a great state of repair anyway, so, um, that's what he would like to do. Um, and we have a, um, a site plan and then I have some architectural plan to show you also. And then I'll tell you why we're here. Because this would normally, you'd look at this and say, you really don't need to be here. Can you see the site plan now?
Yes.
Great, okay. So this is the existing conditions on the left. As you fit, look at the screen, you can see the garage in the back. Um, and then it's better to look at the right-hand side. Um, because. Now I'll pull it up a little bit. And you can see, um, the current garage. Is right up against the property line. And what he's proposing to do with the three-car garage is to bring it seven and a half feet off of. The side and the rear. Um, which you would normally think from, just like we did with the last, uh, presentation, that complies. So you're all set. The problem we have here is under our bylaw. Um, that exception to allow an accessory building in the rear yard only applies to single and two-family dwellings. So even though this is in the single-family district, because it's a legal non-conforming three-family. That provision in the bylaw is determined by the building inspector, does not apply, and I agree with him. So that puts us in a, in a position that in order to, to, to do this, even though we meet that seven and a half and a seven and a half. We actually need a variance for the setback. Because it, it, it would normally meet, have to meet the, the fifteen feet and the twenty-five feet, fifteen feet from the side, twenty-five feet from the rear. Uh, and also we're looking for a finding for the alteration of the non-conforming, that being the, the three-family by adding the three-car garage. So there's two forms of relief. The garage that he desires to put back there is pretty basic. Uh, no one really sees it anyways. It's way in the back of the property. Um, and it's really just a. Just open it up. Single-story. Three-bay garage. With this application, again, I'll share this with Gail. I, I just got these, uh, the other day to wait to submit, uh, but there is. Uh, neighborhood support. I think there, I, my take is they're pretty happy that with the renovations going on, but. These are the neighbors on either side, um, as you face, uh, the house. Uh, Janet Rose is to the left. She is the closest to the garage. And who's a neighbor to the right, um, Dave? Again, if you could unmute and just tell me?
That is, uh, Brian Sinzali.
Okay, yeah, to the right as you face the property in Lawrence Street.
Correct.
Here, in the rear. Um, yeah, it, it's so far away, it, it's like a side street that comes off of Salem Street. The topography is way down below. I tried to, I drove up there and tried to get even near the area. You can't even see it.
I, I believe the, the house in the rear sold recently and there's, there's nobody, there's nobody, uh, living there right now.
You really can't even see it from back there, right, Dave?
No, there's a lot of trees in the back, backyard there.
Yeah. So is, is, um. Um, as far as this is concerned, you know, again, the unique circumstances, we have a legal non-conforming three, which normally you would be able to do that. Um, with, in the single-family district, it's not a problem just because this is a, is a use as a grandfather three, it triggers. Uh, the need to not be, uh, under, uh, allowable under that section of the bylaw. We got to you. It's under one ninety thirty-one and it's not, it's not. The way it's written, um. It says an unattached accessory building serving a one or two-family dwelling may be located in the rear yard within seven and a half feet of the side or rear lot line. It doesn't say within like the single or two-family district, so it, it references one or two-family dwelling. So because this is a three, we need that relief. Um, and you know, I think because of the circumstance, there's a hardship here, uh, because it's just pretty unique with, with this use. Um, and it just doesn't fit the bill in the bylaw. Um. It, it doesn't fit, it, it fits the spirit, but not the word of the bylaw. Um, and, um, it won't have a negative impact on the neighbors as we've just, uh, addressed with the support, um, in the testimony. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. To the board, any questions or comments? Jim, go ahead.
Um, Brian, what about parking? I mean, obviously you can park in the garage, but how about any, any other parking?
I'll bring the site plan up, Jim. You're actually making it better. Um, as I mentioned, it's a, it's a legal non-conforming three as it is, so you can kind of look at what's there today. They've got this two-car garage. You come around, it's like really nowhere else to go, so they're blocking each other in. And now they've kind of, they've widened the pavement for the garage, so. It's going to be at a point that you're pretty much going to be able to park, you know, in the three bays, one for each unit, and then there'll be some room. For this guy can park over here, and I think they'll be able to maneuver better compared to what's there today.
So is the backyard asphalted over?
No, only a portion. Here's the, it, his, here's what it is today on the left-hand side.
Yep.
So this is the exist, you see the existing driveway where it's asphalted?
Yep.
So this is all grass. And then all they're going to do is, this is the existing driveway. They're just going to extend it over. The pavement. So this will all still remain grass. They don't want to pave this in.
Okay. Anybody else?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, hearing, seeing none. Same here, got letters from the, uh, Conservation Commission. The Fire Department and DPW, none of which had comments or a problem with the proposal. With that, I'm going to open it up to members of the public. If there's a member of public here that would like to comment or ask a question on this. Proposal, please use the raise hand function and zoom. Hearing and seeing none, back to the board.
Brian, the, um. Elevation or the architecture of the garage is, can you? Confirm?
Yep.
Trying to see who did this and what the date is. The print is so small. I don't even see a date on it. Maybe the date of the stamp. It's, uh, Edward Dudley is the architect. Edward, Edward Dudley? Yep, D U D L E Y. And it's dated, um, let me see. It's undated, Dave. Sorry, there's. G A, G A one oh five.
Yeah, that's undated. Uh, it's because the building inspector asked us to pull that one page. Because we had that, uh, in with the, the full set that went to permit. So once we pulled it, the, 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 the set that got, um. My phone's ready to die. The set that got stamped and dated, um, that page was pulled, but it's, that's easy enough to do.
It does, it does have a date on the left-hand side, four twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three. See, I just blew it up. Okay. Right here.
You go, I.
Okay. So with that, Mr. Chair, I move that we grant the variance. Pursuant to one ninety sixty-six of the bylaw and. One ninety thirty-one C five. Based on the site plan prepared by. Medford Engineering Survey dated, uh, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the architectural rendering. Prepared and stamped by Edward Dudley dated April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Hmm, hmm, to allow the, uh, proposed raising and reconstruction of a new three-car garage, uh, on the site. Owing to circumstances relating to the shape and topography of the land and structures. A little enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. To the petitioner and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent. Or purpose of this chapter. Yeah, just to point your vodder on that, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yep.
I think, uh, this needs to be from, uh, variance from article, uh, from table two, because. Five doesn't apply, uh, one ninety thirty-one five doesn't apply to this because it's not a one or two-family dwelling. Oh, so it's really the table? Yeah, it's really the table. That's why I applied for, yeah. Okay. Okay, so I would amend the motion to say, uh, a variance in accordance with one ninety sixty-six to vary the requirements of Article six and Table two of the dimensional regulations. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Second the amended motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any? Comments or discussion? Hearing none, uh, regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip? Chip, you're on mute. You might be having a problem with this phone. Greg, I'm going to go to you.
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's adopted five to nothing.
And, Mr. Chair, I move that we. Grant a finding and determination pursuant to section one ninety fifty-B of the bylaw. That the proposed changes, uh, and alterations at the, um. Address, uh, twenty Lawrence Street, based on the plans as stated in the previous motion. Hmm, hmm, shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformities to the neighborhood.
Exactly.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion? Seeing hearing none, same voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That too is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's. All the new hearings for tonight as well. We're moving on to other matters. Uh, we did the presentation on the MBTA zoning. For us, we'll move to. Twenty-three, case twenty-three, five, twenty-three, six, twenty-three, seven, twenty-three, eight, one ninety-eight Albion Street, request for extension and a minor modification.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, here on behalf of uh, one ninety-eight Albion Street. Uh, Giancarlo Tedbury, uh, the developer on this property is. Uh, also here uh, with me as uh, well as Steve DeFuria and. Uh, Peter Sandus from Phoenix Architects. We're requesting two things. We're requesting an extension on the variance because it's coming up. In the special permit, as you know, we have that shot trigger in Wakefield, the one year. Um, so we're looking to extend that for six months if the board would consider that. We don't want these uh, permits to lapse. Um, Giancarlo um, is uh, gonna move forward with the construction. I think uh, there was discussion at one point that he was considering selling the building. He is not, he is now going to build it. Uh, he is here tonight. Um, and the modifications um, that uh, are being requested. Um, that Peter and or Steve will go through, deal with um, making a change to the building to get rid of the elevator. Um, it's only a three-story building and is uh, Giancarlo has started go, uh, getting ready. Um, to start construction. Uh, he has found out uh, through his marketing people for the rentals that. With this type of building, it's really not needed, the elevator, number one. And number two, the lead time and expense for built, uh, ten-unit building is excessive. Um, so, um, we think it actually, if anything, has a, has an architectural benefit to the building. Um, compared to what it is, because now we don't have to have the elevator penthouse on the roof that sticks up. Um, and it also, wh- what we're having to do is we've shifted with the common area areas because um. We need to bring one of the units down to the first floor, but it has minimal impact on the aesthetics on the elevation of the building. So I can talk about the, the impact all day long, but I think it's better if uh, the folks from um, Phoenix laid out for you, so either Steve or Peter.
Yeah, please do.
Uh, I can take it, Brian. Thank you. For the record, Steve DeFuria representing Phoenix Architects. Um, so as Brian mentioned, on the, the inside of the building and I'll show the effect of the elevations in a minute. Um, we're, we're moving the elevator, which was central inside the building initially. Um, unable to get away with removing the elevator in the building, we had to. Um, provide a ADA handicap accessible unit on the ground floor. Um, that along with. ADA access to public spaces, um, all needed to be on the ground floor, so all that is provided. Um, as Brian had mentioned, there was a little bit of shifting with the, the front entrance of the building. Um, in order to get the clearances for the ADA unit on the ground floor, we, we did have to play around with shift in the front entrance. Um, which did take away a little bit of space for retail, so I think previously the retail was about eight hundred square feet. It's about a hundred square feet less now. Um, and you can see on the right side where that common space was, now house is our ADA unit. And then jumping up. Um. In terms of layouts on the second floor, this all stays the same. Um, what we did without reinventing the wheel, um. Is take over the space where the elevator and the utility closet was and actually provide um, storage units for each. Yeah, unit on the floor. So there's five storage units that are central, staircases stay in the same spot, still have five units per floor. Um, and then when we get up to the third floor, since now we have one unit on the ground level. Um, we reconfigured, actually combined two of the units, so now there's four units on the third floor. Second floor has five, so you can see the, the smaller one bedroom here. And here, um, we combined to get a, a much better unit there, so. Unit count stays the same. Um, the unit diversity changes a little bit where we. Um, picked up an additional two-bedroom, deducted a one-bedroom. Um. And then in terms of elevation, you can see now, um, I have the previous graphic, so I can, I'll actually jump to that, but you can see. Um, we had discussion about bringing the brick down to the ground floor. Um, here, previously, this was just in the common area space. Um, and in two sections, we had the brick coming down. With the shift of the front entrance now, um. Now the brick comes down a little bit more, so now there's three windows, more of the residential feel on the ground floor. Um, again, trying to have the differentiation between the, the banding, those bays that break up the retail. Um, and then the brick that wraps around to the residential. Um, and then as Brian mentioned, the head house now gets removed um, off of the rooftop. Since we don't have the elevator, we did have to get rid of the um, tenant roof deck as well, since it's no, no longer accessible. Um, but as Brian mentioned, you don't have now the, the head house sticking up off the, the top floor. Um, on the s- the sides and the rear, e- everything else for the most part stays the same. We just highlighted where the, the head house now is removed. Um, details and stuff and materials stay the same. Um, and then again, looking at the previous graphic, two windows coming down to the ground floor. And now what the building starts to look like now. Um, so even with the removal of the, the elevator. Um, I think the goal for the client and us as well to still maintain the integrity of the building, um, just with those slight modifications. Um, and then in terms of materials, what we looked at, um, previously approved, all that stays the same. We're still looking at the brick. Um, the iron gray paneling on the retail, um, windows, lights, lanterns, those kind of things in the parking area still remain. Um, happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Uh, comments or questions, board members? Assuming I see your hand up.
Steven, can I see that, um, ADA unit plan again?
Yep.
And how big is that shower?
So it's a, it's a three by six, um, so it's the curbless shower handicap, you walk in, um. And then given the five-foot radius in there with the toilet and the sink, um, and also having the grab bars as well.
I think you need to flip um, the shower so the uh, the wall cavity is on the sink side. Cause you don't. You don't have the floor clear space in front of the shower.
Yes, that is a great catch. Thank you.
Anything else, board members?
Yeah, just a quick question. I, I mean, it's not detrimental to this, but was there any thought? I know there's no actual head house anymore, but any thoughts actually still keeping the roof accessible? Still lowering it. I know I have a couple of friends more in the city that have, don't have a head house, but have like a sliding. Angled door, you can't see it from down below, and they access their. Deck all the time. I, I know it's a house, so liability issues may be different, um. Or I should say their own residential, but having that outdoor space seemed to be pretty beneficial to a. Uh, developer like this.
Yeah, it could be something we run by. I know we, we had a long conversation with our code consultant for the project. Um, and I think it has to do with, since we're removing the elevator. Anything that's labeled as public space up on that roof has to be technically ADA accessible. Um, so I think that negates kind of the head house, being able to get up there.
Yep.
Um, but I don't disagree, it would be a, a nice amenity, but I think just with that flip of the elevator, it neglects it unfortunately.
Okay, makes sense. Thanks.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um. I mean, what they're proposing do. Seem to be, um, you know. Minor in nature, again, the overall scope, the look of the building is very much the same. It's unfortunate, you know, the, again, the time we spend on these. And the, the loss of common space, the loss of the roof deck and the public space, it's just unfortunate. You know, um. For the reasons they stated, um. Just, it's unfortunate. Those were nice amenities. I, I know it's more on the inside and we're more focused on what's going on. On the outside and the street and the parking and lighting and all the rest of it, but. Just unfortunate, but um, given what they're proposing to do, um, I, I would say they probably fit the criteria of. Minor modifications and not require a new, new hearing.
Yep, Steven, can you stop sharing, please?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Sent it to minor mod. I don't think we need to do public comment. So I believe uh, a motion would be in order then.
I don't have a copy of these plans. Can you maybe just put them back up or give me a? Like the update on the arc, that whole plan that was presented, so we have that for the record. So it's from Phoenix. Dated what? Today, ten twenty-five?
Yeah, sorry, Dave, I was muted. Yeah, ten twenty-five, twenty-three.
So Mr. Chair, I'd move that uh. The updates to the um. Project at one ninety-eight Albion Street, um, as proposed in the amended drawings uh, from Phoenix Architect. Dated October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three constitute changes that we would determine to be minor modifications to the existing special permit.
Exactly.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion? Okay. Regular voting members, we'll see if Chip's phone is working better. Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip? Okay, maybe not. Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that's, that passes five to nothing.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chair. We also had a request for an extension on the special permits and variances. Um, they were voted on November sixteenth, clocked in on January fourth. Um, we're requesting just a six-month extension to July fourth, uh, two thousand twenty-four to exercise those permits. That means he's going to commence construction by that time. July fourth, twenty twenty-four, is that what you said? Correct. And in the court, reasoning is that he, he's had challenging, he's had, you know, uh, challenge environmental issues that we, we've had to deal with. That slowed him down, um, site preparation because of the environmental and materials.
Okay, any questions or comments on that? I know I'm fine with that. Okay, here it's saying now I think a motion's in order.
Mr. Chair, I'll, um, move that we grant an extension for the exercising of this uh, special permit. Um.
They've been the variants.
And the variants, yep. Um, from, from, um. Think they would have expired, as you said, January fourth, twenty twenty-four, six months to July fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Exactly.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Next item up was, um. Gonna be a question for minor mods for uh, nine ninety-eight through a thousand Main Street. I don't think. Uh, Gail, we don't have, um, we're not moving forward with the minor mod, is that correct?
Excuse me on that one?
We, we're not showing the minor mods tonight?
Um, we, they did present something on Friday that I forwarded it, forwarded to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah. Did you not get them?
I'll have to see.
Okay.
Oh yeah, it was the garage ventilation.
Pull it up.
We got this in mail, Gail?
Um, I forwarded the, their email to you.
There's, there's an email, basically. This, this is an outgrowth of review of the permit set. In which there were several things that. Um, were askew in, in the location of the lot. It was involved in, that's been taken care of. On both the civil and landscape drawings. Um, and so the things that are left. Are in fact. The ventilation system for the garage, which was an open passive ventilation system, is now a mechanical ventilation system. And the other one had to do with the. Proposed lighting that was originally presented to us versus basically unit price now. Um, once these addressed by the board. Then I can sign off that they're in compliance. At this point, the last two items are not in compliance. Dan is here basically to make the presentation, I assume. Uh, so uh, he can walk you through it.
Okay.
Someone can bring the drawings up.
I screwed this one up. I, I apologize. Um.
Did you get them?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, good.
So with that, Dan, if you can share your screen and pull up, uh.
Yep. Okay, um. Uh, Jim is, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, Jim is correct. When we, what I'm showing you here is the approved exterior elevations, excuse me. And we were showing. Uh, exterior openings on the side of the garage with the intent that it be an open garage. Uh, when it came down to, to final design and with structurals. Uh, we were having trouble maintaining the fifty percent open that's required to have a. An open garage and it threw us back into mechanical ventilation. Um, and one of the benefits of that is that, um, the, the closed garage, according to my mechanical and. Our uh, energy consultants and mechanical engineers, a closed garage will maintain its. Temperature better and require less. Um, less heating and ventilation. So what, what we're proposing is. A closed garage and a mechanical ventilation system with louvers that are up. Over the, under the, the soffit of the overhead door.
Excuse me, can you, we're, we're seeing your inbox. Can you click on so we can see the uh, renderings?
Um. I have them, I have them up on my screen.
They're not up on ours.
It says I'm screen sharing.
What, you're screen sharing? We're seeing there are three files. We're not seeing any renderings.
There you go.
Thank you.
You got it now?
Yep.
Yep. Okay. Um, so what we're proposing, instead of the. Uh, the louvers that were shown, actually they weren't louvers, it was a, a graded uh, opening. On the original drawings. Where we have to, because of the requirement that we have a closed garage, cause we can't maintain fifty percent open. Uh, wh- what we're showing is a, a solid garage wall, um, stuccoed. With the approved stucco that was uh, the uh, the. Ephes granite ex finish, and we have a, an intake louvers over the garage doors horizontally, so they're out of sight. And we have an exhaust louver at the rear of the building. And that exhaust louver, that exhaust fan is uh, controlled by a CO detector. That will only exhaust the garage. Um, as required to maintain the CO. Uh, in the garage itself. Um, i- it's, it's actually very energy efficient and it's, it's. According to our energy consultant, it's gonna be very hard for. For developers to build open garages after the January first, twenty-four. Energy requirements come into effect. But that's the reason that we removed the, the open grills on the garage. And I've talked to Eric about this, and if uh, the board is interested in having. The garage louvers, as we showed them on the original drawings, just to break up that, that wall. We're certainly more than willing to replace those louvers, uh, those grills with. Um, false grills in, in the same location where we had them shown before, would use the same material. And essentially just recessed them into the stucco, so they, they gave the appearance of an open grill. Uh, I think the other thing, the other question Jim had. Uh, when he looked at the permit drawings, was he was looking for the locations of the. Uh, when he looked at the permit drawings was he was looking for the locations of the. Um. Exterior vents for the heaters and, and, uh, and heating equipment. And if you look. We'll see that we've shown them on. The sidewalls, so each of those louvers is about a, they're not louvers, they're the flat plate. Uh, exhaust hood, uh, they're approximately five by five, they're actually I think four and seven eighths by four and seven eighths. On the first two floors and on the third floor, rather than penetrate the mansard roof. Um, we've asked our mechanical engineers to move those vents. Um, out the roof vertically from the third floor, so we're not going to see that interruption there. Uh, I think those are the changes that we're looking for, that you were looking to address, Jim. Uh, we did not have the exterior material approved on the drawings, we do have that now. Um, and the electrical engineer has been told to. Um, put the approved light fixtures shown here. On his drawings and I, I don't know if he's done that yet, but we'll check before we submit that again for the building permit. So that's basically the, the, the change that we're proposing is remove the louvers for, for. Energy and ventilation purposes because we can't do the, the open garage and, um. Show those, show the, show the four by, five by five. Uh, wall caps and we'll get that, um, lighting fixture on the exterior of the building. Change to what was approved, that's certainly not a problem. We, in fact, I think we had asked him to do that anyway. And we just missed it in a review of his drawings. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's the change that we're asking for. Anything else, Ken or Eric?
Um, yeah, on a side note, afterwards, I wanted to ask the chairman, um. My, uh. Compliment permit is due to expire in November. And I just wanted to know whether it would be possible to, um, request an extension tonight? Or whether I should do it for the next meeting?
No, you, you, we'll, we'll take care of that tonight.
Uh, no, Dan, that's pretty much it on the, on the plans.
Okay.
So, uh, Tom?
Yep.
Um. Uh, there, I, I didn't get into the discussion with the venting as implied here. Uh, I actually haven't looked at it, what, what they had provided in the previous set. Assuming this is what they provided, um, but, um, the electrical issue is not about. Uh, the lighting, basically, there were a series of lights on the outside of the building. As well as inside the building in the garage. And I think the lighting that was provided in the garage was selected. So when it's seen from the outside. Cause there weren't really a set of louvers, I remember, it was more of a grading or something like that, but anyway. I think they could be changed because, um. They are not going to be seen anymore from a public side. Um, so I, I think there's a proposal here. Uh, that is warranted or change that is warranted, which has yet to be presented. On the other hand, there was a unit price on the schedule for the electrical, um. Engineer basically on this, on the fixture types he should be using as opposed to. Buying it for such, you know, a hundred dollars or whatever else per unit. Um, so I'd like to see, make sure that that schedule is still maintained based on what was approved for lighting, particularly on the exterior.
Okay, no, I certainly agree with that, true. We will, we will, we will take care of that on the electrical drawings.
Could I interrupt? Uh, this is Ward Jaros. I'm working with Eric, Dan on the project and. Uh, new to your group, um, we actually did submit to Gail. The revised lighting schedule that does reflect the approved fixtures, um, so I don't know. If you can pull that up or does that came in that email as well as the hard copies that Eric dropped off for review?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that word.
Okay, I can forward it to someone right at the moment if you want and we can get that off the table. Uh, Daniel, I'll forward it to you, Dan, and you can pull it up on your screen.
Okay. I may not be technically proficient enough to be able to do this work. You have a lot of faith in me. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I can, I'm not sure I can make that happen.
Yeah, if you folks can keep talking about the extension, let me find it here. I was just going through my emails to Gail, hoping I could find it there first, but I'll pull it off my server or my cloud rather.
Yeah.
So, continue talking and it'll be in your, I'll come back on when I've sent it to you.
Okay. Right. No, I, I agree, Jim, that with it, that the, the electrical fixtures on the electrical plans. Should match what was shown on the approved drawings. And according to Ward, that has already been done. I know I asked him to take care of that. And he also asked on the mechanical drawings to make sure that we show those third floor. Uh, vents going up through the roof rather than on the sidewall, and I think he's out of taking care of that.
Well, if you, if this is all taken care of basically, which I have seen the previous. Civil drawings and landscape drawings which have been taken care of, then I'll be able to sign off on these. Depending on the approval of the board here.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to be clear what we're potentially voting on. We've, you know, we've been showing a few changes on these architectural renderings, but if the other plan that is being sent to us. Has changes, modifications to what we approved, then we need to see and understand those too, right?
Yeah, they're, they're, Dave, it's, it's two, it's primarily, um, two elevation sheets from Dan. And one, um, schedule sheet, uh, from Ward or whoever is basically. Those, so the three, there's three drawings involved.
Okay, so we can't render a vote until we see the yes, we. We need to know what we're voting on, right?
Yep.
And then another question too, it sounded like Dan said something like if we want. Something on the walls, we can, that needs to be resolved before we can vote, right?
Yeah, well, what I said was if, if the, if the board is interested in having the. Exterior elevations with the same look as the approved exterior.
Hmm.
Elevations with the grills on it. We can put, um, surface mounted artificial grills on the building. So that the look is the same as it was originally approved.
No, understood, I just think that was said and hasn't been. You know, in addition to the elevations, we haven't really discussed that or figured out.
Yeah, correct.
And I guess, Jim, I would sort of take, I don't know, but I might, again, might not vote, sort of take your direction. Is there even another material that wouldn't add an expense that wouldn't have to just look like a grill? Now that there's actual optionality here?
Uh, I wouldn't bother, basically, I just let him stucco the, stucco the foundation. There may be a reason to put some planting, uh, along one edge basically to delve the whole place down, but. To just stick phony grills in there, I think is a waste of money and waste of time. And doesn't do anything aesthetically for the building.
I guess that was why, was that my question was, is there, I, I understanding it's a forty B, is there another material you would suggest that, you know, isn't going to add a large cost? That would do anything, I, you know, if. Just because they have an opportunity to do planting around it, doesn't mean it's going to happen, or they're going to do it of their own accord.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, some of the, as you see in the front and running up the sides a bit. That was a stone surfacing basically, but I can't see, I can't see that running up the rest of the building.
Okay.
But if we were going to entertain that, we need an updated landscape plan that shows what they're going to do there.
Yep. Yep.
And then we'd vote on that as well. As a minor modification.
So I guess, I guess that's what I was alluding to, there hasn't been any suggestion, so instead of beating around the bush. I don't think they will do that, just because there's an opportunity, they're not suggesting it, they're not going to do it, so. Is there anything we can do so it's not a giant wall? I think that's kind of what we discussed a lot of before.
Yeah, I don't think we can condition a minor mod, so.
No, 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 but I'm just saying, to, to nudge them in that direction. Understanding minor modification in where we are in this project.
No, excuse me, Jim, don't you think a decorative grill would look good almost, uh. On each of those sections going up, um. After we stucco, don't you think that would look good as opposed to, there's quite a bit of height there. Um, you know, our revities aren't going to quite cut it, um. I'm interested in doing something there with landscape wise or, or decorative wise, but it just would have to be something obviously that would. You know, look, I do want it to look appropriate, so, um. It's not so much about cheaping out as far as what, what looks good on the building, so. Um, I thought a grid pattern, you know, metal, um, type, uh, grill, um. Would look nice on the sides.
So that would be face mounted?
I, I'd say face mounted. No, somebody laughing?
No, that's me.
Oh, okay.
Not laughing.
Okay.
Um, just clearing my throat.
Okay.
I suppose you got a point. Um. How to deal with a foundation, you're, you're correct, I mean, it's, it's, you know, ten, it looks like in scale about ten feet or twelve feet in some areas.
In the front, it's close to that, Jim.
Yeah.
I, I, I think a grid pattern type of metal, um. You know, attachment would look, you know, black would look. Nice over a certain, you know, stuccoed areas, maybe with a slightly different color to it.
Um. Well, I could see a black grill, but nothing that would rust, more of an aluminum type of thing that would.
Okay.
Stand up, you know, basically painted black.
Yep.
Along, along there to break it up, yes, I could see that.
Yeah, I think, I think the original grills that we had in there were, uh, I think they were aluminum, black.
So any luck pulling up that plan so we have something that we can reference in a vote?
Um, you've got it now, um, Dan. In an email, it was everything that was sent to Gail and everything that was printed down for, for Jim. If you open your email and you can click on that PDF, you can bring it up. This is again, uh, sheet drawing E nine, which is the lighting schedule.
All right, let me find it. This is the email that you sent to Gail?
Mr. Jarvis, is there any way you can share it? Or I'll start to go into my email myself.
You know what the date of that email was, Ward?
What's that?
You know what the date of that email was?
No, I just sent it to you again though, but let me pull it up.
Oh, you just, oh, you just sent it to me, I'm sorry.
I just sent it, yeah.
Okay, I got it right here.
Okay, can you pull it up?
Yep, I'm getting there, I'm getting there. Sorry folks, I'm not. Not incompetent, but I'm close to it. Get the safe drawings.
Ward, can you bring it up? I'm gonna try that right now. Okay, so you can see me, right?
Yeah.
All right, so you couldn't see me till now, this is what I look like. Hold on a sec. Let me bring it up. Can you see that?
No, what's going to have to happen is Dan's going to have to stop sharing his screen.
Okay.
And share your screen.
All right, there you go.
Okay, so here's E nine, I'm gonna check Dan out of here, hold on. I'm working off an iPad, I didn't expect that I would be presenting here. Uh, where the hell, you guys can see that though, right?
Not yet.
All right, hold on again. Oh boy. That was a civil, okay, here we go, now you can see that screen?
No.
You should, I don't know why we can't. Dan, can you pull that onto your desktop on your laptop and don't open an email and maybe that's the thing? I am on a, I am on my iPad, so I cannot do that.
Mr. Ken, while they're doing that, when would you be seeking the extension till?
Uh, probably, uh, I'd go for a year if possible. Um, trying to get things set up with, uh, contractors right now. Uh, hoping to get a final approval and I'm also working with two banks, um. Winchester Savings Bank and East Boston Savings Bank, um, so. And rates, as you know, it's a difficult time rate wise. Um, so doing the best I can that way, but I have positive feedback, but. The banks are very difficult right now.
Mr. Chair, um, we've been dealing with this project for three years, seems like an awful lot. In my opinion, they have to hold on a year.
I think we're very invested in this and that should go forward, so I think we need to grant this extension.
When is it going to expire? It was November.
Uh, November twenty-fifth, I believe.
November thirteenth, actually.
Oh, thirteenth, okay.
And just out of curiosity, is, is that, that's already on one extension, right? Or, or no?
Correct.
So it's been four years, is that right?
Yes. Three.
Again, I, I, I think given all the time and work, we need to make this a go forward.
Understood, but getting all the information out there is, so it'd be.
It was November of nineteen, so it's been four years now.
Yeah, so, so another would be five years.
We can grant six months and have them check in.
Yeah, six months. That's my opinion.
Well, I just spent a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so. Uh, I'm vested in it also, so I, I, if you want me to come back in six months, then so be it. Um, but.
Be more of a check in, just to make sure everything's happening. I understand the issues you have.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm getting close to the point where we grant the extension and have the team come back November fifteenth. And get every, all their ducks in a row, their plans sent to us in advance. And very clearly articulate on those plans what they propose to modify from what we approved.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Ward, I can't, I can't make it happen.
Yeah, I agree, Dave, I think we've been patient, so why don't we do this, well. In terms of the minor mods, we, uh, if we can get a motion to extend that, uh. We'll put, place that on the November fifteenth agenda. And then we could, secondly, Dave, then we can take a, a motion to extend.
That's what I suggest, I think it's for the benefit of everyone, we're not wasting time, so.
I agree, it's getting late.
Get everything to us in advance, and then we'll have an opportunity to come prepared and see the changes, all right? So with that, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we grant the extension to the comprehensive permit uh, that was due to expire, um, November thirteenth of twenty twenty-four. Uh, at twenty twenty-three, uh, for one year to November thirteen, twenty twenty-four. With a request that the applicant come back in six months, which would be by May twenty twenty-four. And then, give us a, an update on where things are, are headed with this project. Just so we know we're on track, which, anyway, I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, um going to do Jim, Tom, Joe, Dave, and Greg. Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes, extension is been granted.
But did you extend it for a year, Mr. Chairman, or did you extend it for six months?
I'm sorry, Chip, I, I thought you were having phone problems, so.
No, just on charger, I've just been listening to this whole clown act and, and
Well.
Just waiting for it to even out, but I thought we had said you were going to extend it for six months.
Dave's motion was to extend for a year.
Yeah, I know, and I couldn't get off mute quick enough.
With, with a check in in six months, so that, that's what we've been voted and approved. I'm sorry if I'm too quick for you, I apologize.
No problem, no problem.
Okay, and um Dan and uh, Ward and uh, Eric will see you on November fifteenth relative to the minor mods then.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Chair, depending on what our agenda is that night, maybe we consider taking them up front, and again, if we've already been through most of this, maybe it can be a quick hearing at the beginning, when we get into the other matters, just a suggestion.
Yep, they, they've waited their turn, but if you guys can really have your, your, your documents tight and uh and into us as soon as possible, that would be greatly appreciated.
We will.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Guys, sorry, I screwed that up upfront, I misunderstood uh, what was happening there. Uh, other clerk board and comments?
Um, I would just have a quick conversation, why do we award them the opportunity to be up front? If they can't get their act together and present properly? I'm just, I don't, I don't think we should reward somebody for failure.
I'm not wed to anything, they got on the next agenda, we'll take a look at what they're going to do.
All right, thank you.
I did have one quick question, Joe, you've been working with the bylaw committee, huh, and now I'm getting emails again from
Yeah, I know, I just responded to that, uh, I think he I don't know, Dan wanted like a private meeting just between the chair of each of this board with me and the chair of the um, planning board.
Okay. No, I have no problem going to the meeting, I just I know you've been, I don't want to uh disrespect all the efforts that you've been putting in there.
No, it's a separate meeting that Dan wants to set up before, so we can, and also that we could look at the, the bylaw with the, you know, before it goes to our other official meeting a week from now.
Yep.
Without Bobowski, so if you can make it, you can make it, if you can't. My schedule, I, I, I sent it out, like I said, I sent it out on email, you might have seen it, I'm pretty flexible, but I'm at work all day, I, I, you know, I can't bring my iPad with me in the middle of the job site, just click on, so I'm better from the morning or at, at night, so, I don't know.
I agree. I agree.
Since I have the floor, I, I, I guess we could have done this offline, but are you doing the Wakefield one-on-one? Or do you want me to do it, or I know me and Dave did it with Theo last year, I think that's coming up next week.
Is it?
Next Thursday, so.
If I'm around, I don't have no problem doing it.
It's next Thursday. So, think about it, uh, I mean, I can be there, it's next Thursday for, it's only an hour or two, I think, if I remember correctly. Did, Dave, did you bring that same stuff that you were going to bring?
I did.
So I can print that, I can print that all up and, and, and get it all ready, if you want to be there, you can.
I can be there, David sent me a note anyway, I knew about it, I just forgot that was next week with the end of the month here.
Yeah.
I had planned.
We can do it offline, but I should be able to do it.
I'll connect it offline.
I could bring all the materials if you want.
Sounds good.
All right, so that's it, that's all I got.
Anybody have anything else, clerk? Comments, that's it, Jim? Chip? Dave, Greg, Kasumi?
Jim, did you ever ask, I think you brought it up at the video I watched, one of the meetings I missed, and I don't think Brian's here, there's a for sale or a lease sign out in front of uh the old Santander.
Um, I, I did.
Just a generic sign, they're really.
What they, what it probably will end up is like a condominium. So it'll be part of the bigger project.
They might, okay, yeah. Okay.
The rest, the restaurant part, right?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so it's not so much a sale. Basically, it's, you know, you're buying a piece of property, basically, but it's tied into a condominium, which is the whole project.
Okay. Jim, speaking of for sale and lease, did you see that sign on Salem Street, five, four, three Salem? That lot that they, we approved? Multi-family over there, the third one on Salem Street? Going into Litfield, is that gone now?
Of that. I heard he sold, looking for a buyer, someone else to do it. That's what I heard.
Still, do you think they're still doing the project, that it's no, so that project's done?
What we approved appears to be dead, unless a new buyer resurrects it and goes forward with those plans.
Which you'll have to come back for an extension, basically.
Probably, but
Yep.
Which is unfortunate, again, you spend a lot of time on these for everyone involved, they spend a lot of money on their engineers and plans and everything else. But.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough with interest with what it is and everything else.
Yeah.
It's difficult to develop right now.
Yep. All right, anything else? While we go vote on our minutes from October eleventh and October eighteenth, as expertly prepared by Gail?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We can do a voice vote on these, all those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
And here in unopposed, the minutes are approved.
Motion adjourned, Mr. Chair.
Always in order. All right, we can do that by voice vote too, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll see you guys on the fifteenth. And happy Halloween.